There she is. Okay, we're going to call to order the Boulder City Council's special meeting tonight for September 26, 2017. Lynette, will you call the role?
Councilmember Applebaum, Brockett.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Marcel.
Here.
Shoemaker.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
Young.
President.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. Because this is a special meeting, we're not having open comment, but we have three issues under matters from city manager, which I guess you're going to... Okay. And the first one, Jane, did you want to introduce it?
I don't really need to, but I will ask our staff member, Kurt Fernhuber, who is the deputy director of housing, to come forward, and he's going to make the presentation.
Good evening. So I'm excited to present to you this evening the project at 30th and Pearl, known as previously as Pollard Motors. I'm waiting for this to go up on the screen here.
Can you just open it up?
It is open.
Wouldn't be a council meeting if we didn't have technological...
So go ahead and close out that you're going to hit PowerPoint and then slide show it beginning.
Yeah. Hey man, getting the PowerPoint to work.
There we go, perfect. Okay, thank you. So sort of the background on this site. It was identified in 2000 as an ideal area for a center for transit. In 2004, the RTD acquired the site with the city of Boulder to develop the RTD transit area there with Depot Square, affordable housing on top of it. The TVAP Transit Village Area Plan was adopted in 2007. And then there's been two study sessions with council, one in 2012 and one in 2016, to look at the particular sites that we're discussing tonight and the outcomes that city council was looking for. Then in 2016, the Form Based Code was adopted, which also impacts what this site will look like and sort of the approach of the development of this site. So last October, in the study session, we presented four different scenarios to you, and I'll just go over this briefly and then summarize what came out of that study session. So we hired a consultant to do a financial analysis of the site and look at the different levels of affordability that could be obtained through different approaches. So the first scenario was pretty basic. It was assuming that 20% of the units on-site would be affordable, but that we would sell the property to a developer at a cost that was estimated at that time between $12 and $15 million. City council wasn't generally supportive of this idea and really wanted to maximize the outcomes on this site, not just for affordable housing, but for other areas as well that are priorities with the city. Do this. Okay. There we go. The second scenario, we were able to get 32% of the units as permanently affordable, combination of low mod and middle. And this scenario assumed that the whole site would be for-sale units, both the affordable and market units. And I think there was some concern about whether we could get a developer to develop this as completely for-sale as well. Scenario three, we got 30% affordability, but there was a wider mix of units between very small units, up to townhome units, 20% low mod, 10% middle. And then there's, you know, different ranges of the market units as well, which enable the site to create the affordable units from a financial standpoint. And these different scenarios looked at different levels of, slightly different levels of density on the sites as well. So the last scenario got the highest level of affordability with 45%. And you can see sort of the summary of that, the 32% low mod and 13% middle. But it required that the city would put some resources into the project. And for all of these scenarios, it's a mix and it's a balancing of many things. It's the unit types, it's the sizes, it's the number of units, it's the percentage of ownership and rental. So we were really just playing with different options to see what they would look like. So the feedback we received from you last October, this is a summary. So you wanted a diversity of housing types, sizes, incomes. You wanted some rental, some home ownership, family-friendly. You also wanted to serve different types of households. So you talked about co-ops and co-housing. It was our discussion around the, you know, permit supportive housing as it relates to our homeless strategy. It was also discussed maximizing density to enable the most amount of affordability. And then looking at a real creative project that people would want to go to. The Holiday Project was spoken about as an approach that you liked with the diversity of architecture and developers on different blocks. And affordable commercial space was also discussed, not just at this study session, but in other places as well, as something that was a concern for the city, and maybe this could be addressed on this site as well. So we took that information and we developed an RFP. And the summary of the RFP is somewhat similar to that, but we put targets in place. The first was for the site to provide 50% of the total number of units on the site as permanently affordable. That's being a combination of both low mod and middle. A mix of housing types, 10-year, which is rental and homeownership. And a project that really focused on the mobility aspects of the site and really connected well from a pedestrian standpoint and biking. And it being next to the RTD station, it really made a lot of sense to focus on this. Again, the affordable commercial space, hitting some of the city's sustainability goals. And since Form Based Code had been put into place, that obviously became sort of a benchmark for the project as well to meet those requirements. So the RFP went out in March. We had four submissions that were submitted the middle of June. We had a staff committee that was put together that represented all the different technical areas of the city that related to the RFP. And then we had a public forum in this room where each of the four applicants presented their proposal to the public. We were able to hear questions and comments from the public. And then the staff went through a process and scoring of the applications. The committee was unanimous in recommending Zokalo community development and felt that it really hit all of the areas that were identified in the RFP. So from a housing standpoint, they exceeded the targets with 63% of the units as permanently affordable, including middle income. They had a mix of both for-sale and rental on the property. And they had made a commitment with Boulder Housing Partners and Boulder Housing Coalition to own the affordable rental units. The parking was, you know, based on what the requirements were using the Sump principles. And they had affordable commercial space, 21,000 square feet, which they recommended and agreed would be deed restricted. And so I'll go into some of the detail of some of these areas now. So the sustainability strategy, they really looked at the whole site.
I'm waiting for this to go up on the screen here.
You just open it up?
It is open.
Wouldn't be a council meeting if we didn't have technological. Getting the PowerPoint to work.
There we go, perfect. Okay, thank you. So, sort of the background on this site, it was identified in 2000 as an ideal area for a center for transit. In 2004, the RTD acquired the site with the City of Boulder to develop the RTD transit area there with Depot Square, affordable housing on top of it. The TVAP Transit Village Area Plan was adopted in 2007. And then there's been two study sessions with council, one in 2012 and one in 2016, to look at the particular site that we're discussing tonight and the outcomes that city council was looking for. Then, in 2016, the Form-Based Code was adopted, which also impacts what this site will look like and sort of the approach of the development of this site. So, last October, in the study session, we presented four different scenarios to you, and I'll just go over this briefly and then summarize what came out of that study session. So, we hired a consultant to do a financial analysis of the site and look at the different levels of affordability that could be obtained through different approaches. So, the first scenario was pretty basic. It was assuming that 20% of the units on-site would be affordable, but that we would sell the property to a developer at a cost that was estimated at that time between $12 and $15 million. City Council wasn't generally supportive of this idea and really wanted to maximize the outcomes on this site, not just for affordable housing, but for other areas as well that are priorities with the city. Do this. Okay. There we go. The second scenario, we were able to get 32% of the units as permanently affordable, combination of low mod and middle. And this scenario assumed that the whole site would be for-sale units, both the affordable and market units. And I think there was some concern about whether we could get a developer to develop this as completely for-sale as well. Scenario three, we got 30% affordability, but there was a mix of, a wider mix of units between very small units, up to townhome units, 20% low mod, 10% middle. And then there's, you know, different ranges of the market units as well, which enable the site to create the affordable units from a financial standpoint. And these different scenarios looked at different levels of, slightly different levels of density on the sites as well. So, the last scenario got the highest level of affordability with 45%. And you can see sort of the summary of that, the 32% low mod and 13% middle, but it required that the city would put some resources into the project. And for all of these scenarios, it's a mix and it's a balancing of many things. It's the unit types, it's the sizes, it's the number of units, it's the percentage of ownership and rental. So, we were really just playing with different options to see what they would look like. So, the feedback we received from you last October, this is a summary. So, you wanted a diversity of housing types, sizes, incomes. You wanted some rental, some homeownership, family-friendly. You also wanted to serve different types of households. So, you talked about co-ops and cohousing. It was our discussion around the, you know, permit supportive housing as it relates to our homeless strategy was also discussed, maximizing density to enable the most amount of affordability. And then looking at a real creative project that people would want to go to, the Holiday Project was spoken about as an approach that you liked with the diversity of architecture and developers on different blocks. And affordable commercial space was also discussed, not just at this study session, but in other places as well, as something that was a concern for the city and maybe this could be addressed on this site as well. So, we took that information and we developed an RFP. And the summary of the RFP is somewhat similar to that, but we put targets in place. The first was for the site to provide 50% of the total number of units on the site as permanently affordable. That's being a combination of both low mod and middle, a mix of housing types, 10-year, which is rental and homeownership. And a project that really focused on the mobility aspects of the site and really connected well from a pedestrian standpoint and biking. And it being next to the RTD station, it really made a lot of sense to focus on this. Again, the affordable commercial space, hitting some of the city's sustainability goals. And since Form-Based Code had been put into place, that obviously became sort of a benchmark for the project as well to meet those requirements. So, the RFP went out in March. We had four submissions that were submitted the middle of June. We had a staff committee that was put together that represented all the different technical areas of the city that related to the RFP. And then we had a public forum in this room where each of the four applicants presented their proposal to the public. We were able to hear questions and comments from the public. And then the staff went through a process and scoring of the applications. The committee was unanimous in recommending ZOcalo Community Development and felt that it really hit all of the areas that were identified in the RFP. So, from a housing standpoint, they exceeded the targets with 63% of the units as permanently affordable, including middle income. They had a mix of both for-sale and rental on the property. And they had made a commitment with Boulder Housing Partners and Boulder Housing Coalition to own the affordable rental units. The parking was, you know, based on what the requirements were using the Sump Principles. And they had affordable commercial space, 21,000 square feet, which they recommended and agreed would be deed restricted. And so, I'll go into some of the detail of some of these areas now. So, the sustainability strategy, they really looked at the whole site. They looked at the envelopes of the buildings and put a lot of effort into these envelopes to make them the most energy-efficient possible. They recommended looking at geothermal, having an all-electric site with all-electric appliances on the site and not having natural gas on the site. From an urban design standpoint, they had a collection of architects on their team that brought different styles and architecture to the project, related to the surroundings, to the park. And the team has experience with the Form-Based Code. So, here's a table that really looks more closely at the affordable housing component. So, you'll see that from this project, 190 permanently affordable units would be developed. There's a broad range of both unit size and type and AMI. So, they're hitting some of the lower AMIs where predominantly the other proposals were just hitting the 60% AMI. And so, that top table describes the rental permanently affordable housing. The bottom table shows permanently affordable homeownership units, both two-bedroom condos and three-bedroom townhomes, which would represent 10% of all the units on the site. So, one of the things I wanted to look at was how this, sort of the family housing, how that compared to what we would call family housing on the rest of the TVAP area, projects that have already been developed or in the process of being developed. So, in that middle column where it says existing under construction, in the TVAP area, there's 109 townhomes, which represents 10% of the units there. And there's 66 condos or stacked flats. So, all of those are homeownership units. And at 30th and Pearl, the percentage of townhomes would be similar, but the percentage of condos and stacked flats would be significantly higher. So, we saw this as an opportunity, you know, to house a higher percentage of families than the rest of the TVAP Phase 1 development. So, the affordable commercial space, so this is sort of a new idea. Within the city, we have an internal team currently working on how this would actually be structured. So, we would be working with the developer and this would really be a pilot for us. But they've identified 21,000 square feet that would be deed restricted, broken up into smaller parcels for small retail spaces, pop-ups, some nonprofits, some startup, smaller businesses, and really looking at the types of businesses that would activate the site and really relate to what's happening in the street and the public space. So, the parking, if you look at this diagram on the right, it indicates, there's sort of four blocks here. The north and south blocks on the western side of the site would have underground parking of 280 spaces. And then the townhomes in the upper right would have tuck-in parking. And then you'll see there's public parking along the street as well. So, the, one of the ideas is that it would be integrated from a management standpoint with the BJAD parking area. It would, again, use the Sump Principles, 700 bike spaces, onsite car share, and really relating the sites to the pedestrian connections surrounding the site. From a sustainability standpoint, they were really looking at melding the environmentally, socially, and economic areas or approaches to the site. So, again, it's an electric site with photovoltaic solar generating electricity, not having any gas on the site, looking at geothermal, and really looking at the site in its totality and its approach to the energy use. Also, using user load control. So, really, you know, part of it is actually getting the building built and the other is how the people are using it. And so, really putting in approaches that would help people reduce their energy usage. Also, integrating all this with the co-op and cohousing programs as well. From the urban design standpoint, again, there was variety of architecture on the site. The staff felt that they responded well to the Form-Based Code. It interacted well with the park that's going to be developed in the northeast corner, as well as the Goose Creek Path that goes along the north. And the variety of building types was supported by the staff. I also want to mention that several of the staff members are here that were on the committee and can answer more detailed questions about any of these specific areas. So, our next steps, the fourth quarter, if you approve, we would move forward with negotiating a letter of intent with ZOcalo, which would really be an outline of the agreement. And then in the first quarter of 2018, we would complete this development agreement and bring it back to city council. And the developer team is also here to answer any questions. But these are the final questions related to this presentation. And I think that's the first presentation I've ever given that I wasn't interrupted. So, that was, I was surprised.
We're just gearing up. You just wait. So, I think we'll have a lot of questions. So, get ready.
Jan, Mary, Andrew.
I would like to know who was on the team, if it was kind of a coordinated effort among a bunch of different companies, who were they or who are they?
So, I will let them respond to their team members, who's on their team.
Yeah, and if you can start by introducing yourself, that'd be great.
I will do so. Thank you, Mayor. I'm William Shetkin, and I'm the project lead and consultant to ZOcalo Community Development. I had a great time assembling this team, and I'm proud to introduce some of the members. So, our ACE Design Team includes Brian Bowen and his firm, Katus, Bill Holicky and Coburn, and Chris Shears and Shears Atkins Rockmore. We also have a local investor group in Signature Partners, represented by Neil Littman, Scott Reichenberg, and Wendell Pickett. Laura Scheinbaum is here from Boulder Housing Partners, who, along with Boulder Housing Coalition, represent ownership and management for the Affordable Program on-site. We have a variety, perhaps half a dozen other partners, including potential commercial tenants, nonprofit and small business, who are part of our team.
Does that answer? We may have more questions, but.
Sure. I'm happy to stand or?
Oh, well, we'll see. Mary, you're up next. Do you have questions for?
Thanks, Kurt. I really wanted to interrupt, but I contained myself. So, you mentioned the 21,000 square feet of the affordable commercial space. So, I was really happy to hear that it was going to be a variety of sizes and types of spaces. So, that's really great. And I'm curious to know how, what is the basis for setting the rent, part one of the question. And then part two of the question is that rents are going to go up by the Consumer Price Index. And in a video that we received from staff, maybe a couple of weeks ago with respect to the Gallagher Amendment, it talked about one of the flaws of the whole Gallagher Amendment was the fact that the, one aspect of how the taxes rose was because they were based on the Consumer Price Index. So, I just want to understand why the CPI and if that makes complete sense based on the Gallagher Amendment and what other options might be.
So, the, I think the starting point is that we don't know the answers to your questions, but we're working on them. The other thing that we've looked at is connecting it to the area median income, which is, you know, related to the inflation of people's incomes annually. What we do know is the Consumer Price Index is typically more stable than the real estate market. And the level of increase is not as steep typically and doesn't have the, you know, the peaks and troughs that you would see in the real estate market. So, at this point, we believe that it's probably the most stable measurement, but we're open to looking at other things as well. So, this committee that we have currently working on this right now is looking at those things. It's also looking at, you know, how tenants are selected and what role the community may or may not have in that, you know, how the deed restriction is monitored and, you know, what the starting price is from a rent standpoint. So, those are all areas that we're focused on right now. And quite frankly, we're going to work on it together with the developer and with input from yourselves and the community.
Well, thank you. I think this is a really exciting piece of this project. And my second question has to do with affordable housing, rental affordable housing units on-site. And we always hear about how difficult it is to actually put rental affordable housing on-site. And I was just wondering what we've learned through this process that we might apply to other situations where we're told that it can't be done. Apparently, it can, so I want to understand that.
Well, part of the reason it can be done is because they're being given a $12 to $15 million subsidy. And they're not having to pay any cash and lieu or, you know, they're putting all that money into the site. So, we're not exactly comparing apples to apples. This site is also in the qualified census tract, which allows it to have a little bit more leverage from a cash standpoint from the tax credits. That opportunity exists for the next two years. And they, you know, base their assumptions on that. Not all areas of the city are able to take advantage of that.
What does that mean?
Yeah, what does?
Well, they basically, it's basically, it's from census data that looks at what the income levels are of different neighborhoods. And so, different neighborhoods are able to take advantage of that based on that. And HUD basically maps that out for communities.
Is it based on higher income levels, lower income levels? What?
Lower income levels, yeah. And that's why it's actually changing. And that's why we have a two-year window on that.
So, when will the application go in for those tax credits? At what stage in the process?
And what type of tax credits?
So, as it happens, the QCT designation for 30th and Pearl disappears on January 1st of 2018 because of changing demographics and incomes. We met with CHAFA last week, CHAFA being the Implementing Agency for HUD's programs. As Kurt suggests, we believe, though we do not yet have solid legal opinion, that if we file for our 30% li-tech boost, which is what the QCT enables, basically a 30% boost in the value of those tax credits, if we file by the end of the year, a date to be determined by essentially the bond issuer, which could be Boulder Housing Partners, up to two days, two years from that date of filing, we have to essentially begin work, construction on the affordable part of the project. We need to work more carefully and closely on that matter and have started to do so. As Kurt suggests, it's going to be really important for us as a developer team and the city to work together in an expeditious way to take advantage of this particular program, to say nothing of others. This is what allows us to go the extra mile, if you will, at this TOD location on the Affordable Program. We can still do a robust Affordable Program without it, but this is what really, we think, makes this program even stronger.
And are you applying for the 4% or the next?
This is the 4%, so the non-competitive program. Mary, if I could also add to your prior question or response, you might recall you and I met on a different project about a year ago. And you were the one who introduced me to Holly Rogan, who in turn educated me on the problem of small and nonprofit business affordability in Boulder, which is why in another project, our Arapahoe project, we began to experiment with this idea of affordable commercial space. So, we're already learning a lot about what we can do. What we have committed to do in our proposal, using tools like the CPI most likely, but we remain open to other techniques, is work closely with the working group at city staff to figure out a very creative way to make permanently affordable the commercial space in this project and to then use that as a model in other projects, whether it's our Arapahoe Avenue project or some project that another developer does. We want this to become as important and doable as affordable housing itself has become now over several decades.
Well, thank you for that. I really appreciate it. And I think it's really important to do this. It's, I just found out today that we're losing another landmark business in Boulder, and it's quite disheartening.
Indeed.
Can I have a follow-up on that?
Okay, and then Andrew.
So, 4% you're applying for rather than the 9% because you're sure to get it and timeline dictates that you do that?
A couple of reasons, really. One, yes, the non-competitive nature. And in a complicated project such as this, we want to manage and control for risks and uncertainties as much as possible. We also want to make sure that the 9% opportunity, which is a limited and competitive one, is available to other projects in the City of Boulder and throughout the county. So, we don't necessarily want to use this project as a competitor for that competitive program.
If I could add to that as well, as a county consortium, we meet on a regular basis and talk about other projects that are going on and communicate with each other around who's going for what deals to ensure we're not competing against each other in any particular years.
I'll do my after, Andrew.
Okay, cool. Andrew?
So, this is, this may be a question for you, Kurt, or maybe for Bill. And that is, and this is not a knock on this project at all. I think this is wonderful. But as I look at the distribution of affordable versus middle income, which is something that we've been focused on and we continue to seem to get further and further behind on, I noticed that, you know, there's a 53% affordable allocation and, or, you know, distribution and a 10% on the middle. And what drives that, not just for this project, but for all projects, I mean, is it that the, sort of the leverage you get for the type of program you just described actually pushes us to create more affordable than the middle income?
Yeah, let me say something, then you can jump in as well. So, I think part of it is the, for the affordable low-mod rental units, which would be owned by BHP, there's a certain efficiency you get from scale. So, if they were going to do, let's say, 30 units, they'd probably have to put almost the same amount of affordable housing resources into it as doing 43 units. So, the scale makes a big difference. And so, if they increase the percentage of middle income by, from 10% to 12%, they'd probably drop much more than that on the low mod. So, it's kind of balancing those things.
Yeah, Andrew, it's really also a public policy issue. HUD, low and HUD, low-income housing is now centuries-old problem predicament opportunity. So public subsidy, public support is essentially what allows us to develop and build at any scale, low-to-moderate income housing. It's only been in the last decade, 15 years, arguably starting in the early 80s, that the problem of the missing middle, of the middle class and thus middle-class homeownership becoming a crisis. We do not yet have the policy supports. As with affordable commercial, so goes affordable middle-income housing. So what I expect is that we will see communities like Boulder on the cutting edge, who are dealing with this assiduously and carefully for the next decade or two, developing innovative supports that increasingly generate public support, that would allow us to subsidize or otherwise incentivize through public policy the development of these projects, without which they just are not economical, too difficult to make the numbers work.
And is there, you know, the, I guess, the, you know, I guess one of the concerns you often hear expressed about market rate is that it's, you know, goes, it goes at the market rate and then it continues to appreciate, and so it always stays sort of at a certain level. But for a developer who's developing something and selling it at a point in time with a deed restriction at a market rate, I mean, is that, I mean, is that something that, you know, is possible and does that allow us to increase the middle income within a deed restriction after the fact, which shouldn't affect the developer, but maybe I'm wrong? Does that make sense?
Again, this is essentially an emerging market. The idea of permanently deed restricting essentially market-rate housing to meet the needs of the middle. This is experimentation, this is innovation happening before our eyes. Clearly, most developers, if they saw a deed restriction on market rate, capping at certain levels on an annual basis, would walk away. That's not an attractive deal. But increasingly, with so-called impact investors, patient capital, and a new generation of developers understanding a new and emerging market and need, social need as well as economic need, I think we're going to see more acceptability absorption in the market. But we're really at an early stage in the evolution of a new kind of real estate.
Okay, thanks. And last question, and this is, we saw a distribution sort of analysis comparing this project to others in the area, you know, and as you heard at the study session, and I think you hear from the public in general, just partly because they know it, but this Holiday concept, how does the distribution of types of units here compare to the distribution of types of units at Holiday?
I don't know that off the top of my head. This is a, this is a more urban setting, so it is a little bit higher density. The overall affordability at Holiday is 40%, so it's lower than this. And I think the reason it is lower is simply based on the density. And they are two different projects with two different cost structures. But from an affordable housing standpoint, this project really performs very well against Holiday.
If I could just chime in a little bit, Holiday is a fair amount less dense, so they're not, there are very few apartment buildings and a fair amount of townhouses and duplexes and some single-family homes, whereas this has some townhouses but mostly condos and apartments. So it's, this is definitely denser.
That's right. I believe it's the difference between five and a half acres and Holiday's, what, 25, 30 acres or more? Great, Bill?
Bill Hollick with Coburn. Throw a little color on that because we participated heavily in Holiday. I think that here we have about 10% townhomes. At Holiday, it's maybe two or three times that for single-family homes or kind of product that has a fee simple kind of situation that sits on a piece of land. But the primary difference here, besides the urban setting and the size of the parcel, is the TOD setting. So the idea is the more people that we can get within walking distance of the TOD center, the more likely they are to use alternative modes of transportation. So right now at Holiday, everybody has to walk to Broadway to catch the bus, which works, it's great, but it's a whole lot easier to go 200 yards away to the bus station. So that's the change of product type there a little bit.
Thanks.
Okay, Sam and then me and then Lisa.
So first question is, back to Mary's question about what did we learn about how to do rental affordable housing on site? Is it in its own building? Are you financing, is somebody going to finance a building that's strictly for affordable rental?
Yes, so, and there will be several buildings. I believe the total is four of the seven, including the co-op cohousing building, which will also be affordable. So while they will be discreet, separate buildings, we have very purposefully tried to integrate through our urban design the location of those buildings so as not to create the sense, the feeling that there are affordable units here and market rate there. The key theme, as Bill just reminded us, of our proposal and of course of this site and this part of Boulder is mobility. And what we tried to do very explicitly in our proposal is say that it's not just about TDM and buses and bikes and people walking on sidewalks. This is about social and economic mobility. This is about residents, businesses who see this site as an opportunity to engage across the spectrum and the ladder. And by living cheek-by-jowl, or at least in a well-designed urban neighborhood, low-income, low-to-moderate income to high-income earners, we think that in a sense is the American experiment. And this becomes a great site to demonstrate that.
Bill, again, just a little bit of color, but we've found with the Holiday model especially that as long as we can create a mixed street, so you have a public realm, and if you can put both market rate and affordable opening onto that public realm, then the street becomes a mixed street. It doesn't matter so much that the building is different. Keeping the affordable in one building, again, we found this lesson in Holiday to be pretty illuminating, allows us to lower the HOA dues because we can focus just on those things that the affordable units need and not charge them for a swimming pool, a spa, stuff that is, you know, extra if we don't have to. So we can drive the OA dues down and then we can still create a mixed street. And the last thing that we did, and we had, this was part of our Q and A, we looked at the entire area. So if you start south of Pearl and you end north of Valmont, you can start to look at where the affordable and the market rate is and start to try to create kind of a chessboard of mixed income as you go down. Because what we don't want to do is have this site continue a pattern of, say, the affordability that's just to the east of the parking garage structure. You don't want that, our site to increase kind of an affordable block or take the Solana market rate model directly to the south and continue a market rate block. You want that to be mixed, so all the streets are mixed. So there is in the packet, an analysis diagram of how that works.
Were you trying to jump in on that?
So the point of my question, really, I'm quite pleased that they're on site and I'm quite pleased that there will be this mix. I was just trying to make sure that I understood the mechanics that were required in order to be able to achieve that. So it's the, both the tax credits and the donation of the land, but also the fact that you broke them out so that they can be financed individually.
Yes, so there are definitely mechanics.
Right.
Regulatory, financial, and otherwise.
Got it. Very good. Just a question, you can stay up there for a little bit, but quick question. Did all the projects, do the proformas, is if the land was donated?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
And they all, in the end, did it in an approach where the city was not putting additional resources into the project?
It's just the land?
Yep.
And what fraction of the total project cost that you expect to be at the end of the day is the land donation?
Well, this would be very much a ballpark, and depending on the valuation of the land. So we've got, what, 12 to 15 mil as the price range? So what project that represents perhaps about 10% of the value of the pro forma?
Okay, great. That's the only level of specificity I need. I just needed to kind of understand what we were bringing to the table. You bet it.
Can I just ask, is that typical? Is the land cost really only 10% of a project?
I wouldn't, it depends. Case by case.
Well, okay, but it depends what gets built on it. And, well, okay, so for an intensive development, really only 10%?
Well, I can answer that to a little extent. It varies pretty heavily based on the yield that's allowed on the land and where the land is. So if you look at downtown Boulder, you can put a lot on that land and that land is very valuable. But again, you can put a lot on it. So that tends to lower the land basis as a percentage of the overall project because you can put four stories on it. If you go out maybe to East Boulder, where you can only put one story on or your .5 FAR, it's going to lower the land value because you can't put as much development on it. But on the other hand, the land's cheaper. So actually, this particular site tends to be, or areas around here tend to be kind of a little bit different because you can still get a lot on it or a reasonable amount on it, but the land maybe is a little bit cheaper than it would be downtown. It's not, maybe downtown, this parcel goes from 12 million to 20 million, and I'm making numbers up. There isn't any parcel available, so it's hard to gauge the market. But generally, that would mean that, we've just recently done some other projects in the area, and based on the land sales, I would say that potentially normally it's more like 15% of the land values, maybe 15 to 20% of the overall project cost, maybe in the 15 range. But the Form-based code has reduced a little bit the yield because we've carved off pocket parks and we've solved for smaller buildings and more public space. So there's a little bit less that can fit on the site despite the FAR limits.
So Bill, if I can kind of ask another question or other question, summarize what you just said. Is what you just said basically that the land value depends on the entitlements?
Absolutely. The amount that you can fit on the, yeah. You solve backwards for the price of the land, right? Because you know what the market will pay, you know how much it's going to cost you to put it on, even if it's leveraged from tax credits. And so the only variable is the land at the end of the day. So that's what changed.
So can I just ask you a question following up? On Holiday, Holiday was also owned by the city. The city owned that. Do you remember what the percentage was of land costs on that?
I don't. Laura's here, and BHP drove that project, so she might be able to...
I mean, they were the master planner.
They were the master planner, yeah. And I don't know what the individual parcels were.
I don't, I only remember the land cost, I don't know that the cost...
If you're going to talk, you could come, sorry. Just so that everybody in TV land can hear you. And if you could introduce yourself.
Good evening, I'm Laura Scheinbaum with Boulder Housing Partners. So I was not party to the development back in the day when Holiday was done. I do know that our land cost was significantly less than what we're looking at at the Pollard site. I would hazard a guess of 5%.
And I guess I'm also wondering, from the time the city bought the Holiday property to when it was developed, it's a much shorter period of time from when we bought Pollard and then are going to develop it. And so I have a question with regard to, are we assuming a rate of inflation for that property? Because there is a real value to that versus, is it actually just the cash that the city put out for that property?
That 12 million does not represent what we paid for it. It represents what we think the market value is.
Okay.
As part of the, yeah, but that was for the total sites. So it's probably closer to 5 million as...
Right, we sold off...
And as part of the consultant analysis, market studies were done to determine what the current market value of the land is.
Okay. And I could just add two other cases to Mary's original question. So we have another project before the city, similar project, East Arapahoe. It's about exactly 10% the value of the land, total project cost. And another project that Bill and I have recently explored along with David, and let me introduce David Zucker, CEO of Zookalo Community Development. It's a case study in what happens when land values just get so crazy. So this is five and a half acres in North Boulder, a site not to be identified, and the seller is looking at a price point of over $20 million. And this is a site that will not accommodate much density, at least the neighbors wouldn't allow for it, which essentially precludes any onsite affordability. It just doesn't work economically. Now, the one safety valve in all of this, right, is a market downturn of significant proportions, which makes all of these land values suddenly more attractive. But none of us necessarily wishes for that. So we think the land cost here, whether it's the 9 million divided by the area of this particular part of the planning area, or some other inflated, more inflated figure, we very carefully, over the period of three months, as we developed our proposal, really identified those financial risks that we could control for and manage so as to be able to maximize the affordable program, including the middle-income piece, which ultimately is and was the hardest part of the puzzle to solve for.
Okay, so we're going back to Sam with more questions.
So this is probably for both of you. There's a lot of really great things in this project. I mean, a bunch of elements that are just fantastic. Do we know that these will all actually show up? Or what are the things that might fall off the table if push comes to shove on financing rates or what you get for your tax credits? Or how will, how will we monitor which of these elements are going to be sure to come forward? I'm assuming affordable housing at the top line would, is that correct?
Would, would fall off?
No.
No.
Come forward.
That's a priority and a sacred piece of this. So as I think we said at our presentation, you know, we, not just because of the city's contribution of the land, but because many of us live in Boulder, we see this as a special place and are concerned and also excited about its future, see this particular opportunity, 30th and Pearl as a showcase opportunity, as a trust, as sacred trust, as my colleague Bill Hollick said. So what we will do and commit to is put all of our creative energies and our intellects, not just us as a development team, but working in partnership with the city of Boulder, the city staff, across departments and disciplines, this is a multidisciplinary project, to come up with the best project we possibly can. The next three months, as Kurt said, are the time when we get to outline the priorities and the non-negotiables, the things that we are committed to early on. By the time we come up with a development agreement that the city staff will then present to you, you will have a very clear sense of what this project is committed to legally and otherwise, and what might be essentially optional. But our intent is to follow through as completely and thoroughly and professionally as we can with everything we said we would do in this proposal. And what we tried to do was leave nothing for guessing. We committed to the Form-based code, we committed to the other requirements that's spelled out in the RFP, and we used our economic analysis to show that it was doable.
So if I could just add on to that, in the development agreement, there would be a list of assumptions that would be made as well that would, you know, relate to those outcomes.
So, okay, so both Jan and I want to ask a little bit about this one. Assumptions or binding assumptions?
So we would make assumptions that, for example, they're going to be able to obtain 4% tax credits. And, you know, other things like that that would impact what the outcomes would be. And...
Well, I guess one of the things, and I appreciate what you just said, and yet we have been down this road before. And it is curious to me that people can submit proposals, be graded on them, be chosen for them, and they're not required necessarily to follow through. That blows my mind. And I guess, and one of the things we're trying to do is, I think, with community benefit, is be a lot clearer about what we get, because we've had some experiences in the past. So I guess I want, I appreciate what you just said, but what about, because there's a lot of other, I mean, by far affordable housing, you got that at the top of the list, but there's some other stuff, like this geothermal stuff. Like, that would be kind of important too, because we're trying to figure out some of this stuff in our sustainability work. And so that's an attractive piece of this. But if that falls away, anyhow, I guess I want some more reassurance from you that we can hold them to their great commitment made orally, but not yet on paper.
Right. So they also need to be able to build the project. And so I think the starting point is understanding what the environment looks like now and making that part of the record. And all of the applicants that put forward applications use, you know, fairly similar assumptions as well. So I think that there's consistency there. But I, you know, documenting what those assumptions are, I think, is critical to the agreement.
Okay. Jan, did you want a variation on this thing? Or, you just went on the list?
Yeah.
Okay. Did anybody else want?
Just on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just on that?
Just on this, because Sam's got more questions. Just on this? Because Sam's got more questions. We're just doing on this one question.
Yeah, just, I mean, it makes sense to, to document the assumptions involved, but it seems like at the time in the development agreement that there would be certain things written into the agreement as well.
Absolutely.
Not just assumptions, but also commitments, right? I mean, that's part of what this process will entail, is that eventually y'all will arrive at an agreement that does write on paper.
Right.
You know, certain things that are committed to. Now, plus assumptions, so if the 4% tax credits fell through, you'd have to go back to the drawing board. But if certain assumptions are met, then these commitments would be made as well.
And is that how you envision?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And can I give the developer's perspective, David Zucker of Zokolo Development? First of all, thank you for the opportunity. We see this really as the convening, the enunciator of the project is the city of Boulder. The fact that the city, astutely as it did in 2010, acquired the property, 2004, I'm sorry, acquired to, to insulate from market issues, this is the, now the opportunity to reap the benefits. The city is therefore our partner, in just the way that we respect any equity partner in one of our projects. And this is perhaps the first thing that we talked about with Kurt last week when we met, is that in my mind, as the managing member of the development, there is nothing that happens without the approval and buy-in of the, of the partner, of our equity partner of the city. So it is completely understandable for recent history for there to be sensitivities. Our assumption is, is that there will not be a conveyance of the land unless we are delivering what was, what was sold to the city. And so might there be a condition where 4% tax credits go away, the pricing of the 4% tax credits diminishes? So in those exigent circumstances, then we would have some, some further discussion. Might we put some things on a wish list, which if the pricing of the tax credits, let's say, is, is better than a dollar, and we have dollars to use for things like geothermal or geo-exchange, we will, we will do that. So there may be some reach items. That's why we're looking for a pace loan, for instance, that we can match against energy savings. So commercial pace is the progenitor here in Boulder, so we're excited to engage in that. There may be some things that are wish list items, and those will be with our partner. And we've talked about this dialogue of monthly meetings with, with our partner, the city of Boulder and Kurt Fernheber. So we will not be able to close, in my mind, we're going to be making very clear commitments of what it is that the city is going to be getting, and therefore what is required before we can close on any one parcel of land.
Okay. So I just want to, here's the queue. Sam's got more questions. I'm in the queue, you're in the queue, Aaron's in the queue, Jan's in the queue. So if we're done with this question, I, I'll let you go back.
Okay. Just, just a couple more. I noticed that there's a soft goal of getting to net zero on the site. And I was curious how the mechanics of that would work. Like, is it all going to come from the solar panels for the electricity, for the geothermal heat pumps? Or is it going to buy some recs or buy some wind source? Or how are you going to think about getting to net zero?
Thanks, Sam. So we know this is a sensitive issue, and we've recently done in the area, our company has done a net zero building, and it came out, still performing better than net zero. It's just got TCO, so that's really positive.
Great TCO.
And we will continue, we'll continue to bring, come back and let you know how it performs over three years, because modeling is one thing, real life is another.
Certificate.
TCO. So it just, it just opened. The building just opened. The Commons Building just opened.
Oh.
Yeah. So the reason that we were able to get to net zero right around the corner is because we were able to use an extra wall for solar panels. So we were able to do something that's a little bit unusual. When we did the presentation with staff and we walked through our sustainability goals, we tried to be as clear as we possibly could, so it's probably worthwhile to repeat this a little bit. So the way we're going to attack sustainability, first, we're going to go after the envelope hard. And we have some ways to do that that approach passive house standards and are not, have not really been done in Boulder or really in Colorado before, including pretty heavy-duty ceiling of the buildings and very thick external insulation. So we're trying to drive the loads down as far as possible. That's the biggest bang for a buck that we can get. Solar on top of all the roofs is a gimme, but there's only so much roof area. So then we start to have to look at managing plug loads, managing user behavior, which is much easier done in a commercial setting than it is in a residential setting, because you only have two or three tenants in a commercial building, and you can put in the lease that they have to care. In a residential building, you have a bunch of for-sale units, a bunch of individual owners, and there's nothing that says they have to care, so they can turn on the blender all day long and run it. So we're trying to create a system that cares for the folks that live in it. So the simple one that everybody knows is a Nest thermostat that learns with you. There's learning thermostats. There's all those things like geofencing, so when you leave your unit, your key fob shuts off everything except for a couple of outlets that are necessary. There are, the smart appliances are changing, there's ways to manage the way people use energy within their, within their units. And some of that's very simple, like a geofence. Some of that is very complicated, and some of that's consumer-based. With Google Home, for example, you can do things now that you couldn't do two years ago. So driving down the plug load is a big deal. After that, it starts to get complicated. So we did say we'd like to get to net zero or near net zero, but we acknowledged in the presentation that that would be a challenge. One of the challenges with geo-energy, for example, is district-wide, we have rightaways that cut up the site. It cuts them into four parcels. And we can't run private utilities underneath those rightaways. At least, we don't think we can. But that's one of the things that we said that we would talk to staff about moving forward. And that's a set of meetings that we have to understand. So in that regard, this project could be sort of a bellwether or a test tube to see what is possible within the city rightaway standards, and can we put in district-wide heating and cooling and still span rightaways? Or if we can't, then do we look at mini-scale ones that really just power two or three buildings, and is there still value in that? So I just wanted to be clear that we're not sitting up here saying you're going to get geothermal and net zero. But we are going to use the package that I just described as the starting point, which gets you a pretty good building, especially with the passive house external, you know, kind of envelope. And then continue to work with the city's environmental sustainability department and our, our knowledge to try to drive that down as far as we can.
This is a really important point, going back to Sam, your question. The record will reflect that I think we were one of, one or two teams that said we will do our level best to get to net zero energy, but we can't commit or promise to it. Other teams promised that they could do it. We didn't think that was achievable. And we didn't want to say in July we could do it. Hopefully, with prices going down on various tools and technologies, by the time we build this project, perhaps we'll be able to do it. We didn't want to commit. We're an honest, straightforward team. Secondly, as Kurt noted earlier, with respect to the QCT, that changed two weeks ago. So something nobody was planning on suddenly showed up on our screen as a, as a variable. So our intent is to be really open and honest as changes that affect our project economics and the project operations come to us. We can go to Kurt, and to Jim, and to Molly, and to Jonathan, and to Edward, and everyone else at the city, and feel comfortable and confident in being able to have an honest conversation about a change that we weren't planning on.
Can I ask about this?
So that's a great answer. I would have been shocked to hear you guarantee that we'd get net zero and all this affordable housing. That would be almost too good to be true. But I will say that looking at the geo-exchange could be really interesting at that site, if you can get units that are sized appropriately. Last question, it's also on the energy issue. You talk about no gas or minimal gas coming to this facility, but then there's mention of combined heat and power. I would assume that would be a gas gen set that's recovering the heat to heat water for either space heating or water heating. So how do you resolve? I mean, I'm not sure I would think of, at least it's using the gas as efficiently as possible to make electricity and heat. But what's your thoughts on CHP systems?
It's changing pretty rapidly. And what we're finding in, we've started to look at hyper-efficient units and heating and cooling them, so let's start with that side. The loads are so low that there's nothing commercially marketable that will do it. So we're talking like BTU, BTU loads of 5,000 BTUs or 8,000 BTUs, there's nothing. Because, you know, generally you have one external wall, everything else is inside. Even if there's a roof, it's R50. And that, we're looking at walls that potentially have as much as four inches of unbroken insulation on the outside and are sealed with a new product that essentially, people hate it when I describe it this way, so I apologize. But you set off a bug bomb inside the unit with a fan pressurizing the unit while the thing is dry-walled and, and studded. And the fan pressure pushes, it's like a tire flat seal, it pushes it and seals every crack in the unit, much better than anybody could do by hand. So you end up with this really low air changes. So you've got a unit that's not conventionally heatable. So what we're looking right now at, I don't have a solution to this yet, but what we're looking at doing is essentially doing almost a heat exchanger based on a bath fan. So we build a little unit that has a heat exchanger in it, so it's electric-based. So that's how the, the unit heat is done. So then you're left with domestic hot water. That's the, always the big problem when you eliminate gas. So there are ways to do it, but as you know, it's less efficient than like the most efficient gas hot water heaters, because we can get different, we can get a very efficient gas hot water heater. So what we're looking at actually is heat pump water heaters. So like GE makes that one. There's some other, REAM is coming out with one. There's, there's a few options. The early ones, like four years ago, when they came out commercially, were extremely problematic. One of the problems with them is that they cool the space they're in. So you put them in a mechanical room, it's heating the water, but it's pulling the heat out of the air to heat the water. So it's not as efficient as it looks like it is on paper. Long story short, I don't have an answer for you. But we're looking at different, really it comes down to, the domestic hot water problem is the biggest problem with all of this. But you can put a little money into solving that problem, because eliminating all the gas infrastructure in the project, pretty, that's, that's a lot of money. You know, hundreds of thousands of dollars probably when distributed to all the units. So you can put some money into the solution of the problem.
Well, so just, so it's me and then you. Continuing on this vein, we just were out at Panasonic on Thursday and looking at the stuff coming down the pike. And different cities were presenting on their, kind of their latest innovation. Westminster is working on this geothermal, their city hall, their municipal building is funded, or is heated, and they're doing a whole district down there. And my only point is if Westminster is doing it, just saying. But anyhow, I guess, I think it's, it's good to hear what you're saying about you're willing to work with the folks sitting back there in the second row. I think it's worthwhile as a city for us to be able to test out some of these concepts that we've been talking about as part of our approach, you know, to climate and energy, and then to actually be able to work with developers on city-owned sites to actually bring them into life. I think it ranks well affordable housing, but it may be just right there next in line as a really kind of important element of this, I think. So...
Well, and the cheaper the utility cost is, the more affordable the units are. I mean, that's, that's forgotten.
So I will just make that point. The one other thing I wanted to just throw out there, because we've been talking about most of the stuff collectively, is parking. Okay, we hear autonomous vehicles are coming, shared, electric, bundled. If our dreams come true, we won't need huge parking garages. And yet, we need them now. So I guess the question is, are we building these in a way that our wishes all come true and we all don't need to own vehicles in the future? I know, I should, I should rephrase that, as the majority of folks don't need to own them anymore. That we can repurpose parking garages in 15 years or whatever, if indeed all that comes to pass?
Specifically, can you address how you could do an indoor soccer arena underground?
Sure, absolutely.
I would like to hear the parking structure that you're going to do. That's a serious... Can that be converted over time?
Sure. So I'll, I'll answer this from an urban design and repurpose standpoint. There may be some financial response to, but I'll let William tackle. But, so the first rule is if cars may go away, then there's absolutely no reason to let them dominate or change the public landscape that we would want to have. So what we want is, think about it in terms of, if you go up a scale, you have airplanes, right? You have airports, and you fly in an airport, and then you get into a car. So we want to do that, but with cars and walking. So you drive your car somewhere, or you get dropped off somewhere, and then you can walk around. So these little hubs, this is a hub. We need the parking now, obviously, to sell the units. But we want to make sure that the parking doesn't dominate any of the public streets. Everything is parallel parked, there's no parking lots, there's no tuck-under that you can see from the street, all that. So we've driven it all underground. That's the first step. The second thing, it's probably a little bit of a different answer here than it is on other projects, because here we're in a parking district. So all those, you know, either driverless cars or Uber cars, they have to go somewhere at night when they, we don't want them just driving around town wasting energy. So this would be an appropriate place for that to be sort of the dock for those cars at night. It's right at the transit center, it's in the center of town. And so I could see, you know, that there is a, a public-private partnership, and maybe we're talking 50 years down the road, but eventually, perhaps, that becomes a place for the, the driverless fleet to hang out when it's not being used. You couldn't repurpose that one as an indoor soccer facility, unfortunately. And because it's underground, it probably isn't very easy to repurpose it, because we'll have sloped ramps. If it was above ground, and this is concepts we're using in other places, the idea is to use twin-T construction, and then you can just remove the parking garage later. It could just be craned out, and you can put more units in.
What kind of construction?
Twin-T. So instead of pouring everything in place and building it out of pieces and having the concrete poured altogether, the only reason, the only way to remove that is to demo it with a wrecking ball. You can buy concrete called double Ts, so it, it looks like an upside-down T or an upside-down double T. And then you just set these pieces of concrete in place, and you can make your ramps with them. I'm making it sound way easier than it is, but you can come back later and just take them out with a crane.
Interesting. Okay. Were you gonna, did you have more to say on that? You don't have to. You just are kind of...
I will.
Okay. Lisa, you're up.
I'll continue on parking. And, and, you know, this is the transit center. And so, and I, I like that you guys come in with the least amount of cars or parking spaces. But one of your competitors had, I forget who it was, had, you know, the fleet of shared cars and bikes. And what are your, what are your thoughts about that?
Well, as, as Bill suggests, we love the idea of over time, and whether that's five, six years, which by the way, many economists and urban planners believe will be the threshold year when car sharing is 10 times cheaper than car ownership, which historically in economic history is the tipping point, when a technology shifts. So I think it will be a really interesting several years in Boulder and across this country, as car ownership and car dependence begins to evolve, some new form takes shape. You know, the, the best answer we have right now for how we will deal with parking and the issue or problem of cars at 30th and Pearl is by maximizing the smart, well-designed density in this project. And that, I believe, applies across the city of Boulder. So what we've done, as Bill said, is we've done our best to basically hide the, the car and parking footprint while accommodating what we note to be today and at least the foreseeable futures' needs.
Right. And I really appreciate that. But, you know, right now, we do have, you know, shared cars and shared bikes, and there's a whole affordability component in here, which I'm very excited about. And one way you reduce the cost to people is you reduce those vehicle costs and your utility costs. So I just want to talk about the, the vehicle costs and reducing that for people.
It's, it's a great point, and we're trying to stay really flexible on it. There's so many changes there. You guys see it, I see it on the hotline, you guys live it, but RTD may be changing the ECO pass.
Yeah.
The, the, we have to, you know, the project, all projects pay in for three years of ECO passes for the people that live and work there. If there's not an ECO pass, where does that money go? Do we do a car share instead? One thing we do know is that the entitlement process is likely to take about two years, and if we're fighting against that QTC window for two years, it's going to be tight. But we know that it's going to take a year and a half or two years to get through this. I, I know that the right answer in 18 months is different than the right answer now. So that's one of those things that we talked about trying to be flexible with and look at, if in 18 months, there isn't an ECO, I mean, I hate even saying it, but if there isn't an ECO pass available...
There will be.
Great. If it's a community-wide ECO pass, which would be even better, then maybe the community or the, the project contributes in a different way, which maybe is car share.
I mean, what's so ironic about this site? I mean, what's so ironic about this site, for me, it's much easier to access by my bike than by car.
I agree.
And it's much easier just to move around in there and just to get there. I mean, the first time I went to the pub, the railroad station, couldn't figure out, well, where would, how would we get our car there? And where to park, and stuff like that.
Because it likes to drink beer.
Yeah, my car likes to drink beer. But anyway, it was raining, I don't know, we were trying to figure out how to get there. And I had only gone by bike, because it's just so easy. And so we have this site that we've done so much work in the whole transit village to kind of make it alt mode, or, and I don't even call it alt mode, but suitable for other modes, that I would really like to see that shine. And I get you need to sell your units, but it would really be nice to be able to reduce the number of parking units.
Could I ask Molly Winter then to add something as well?
Yes. Department of Community Vitality. Just to clarify, this project is within two overlying districts. One is a parking district, and one is a TDM district, or Travel Demand Management. So yes, there is an initial pilot payment to kind of start the project off, to cover the TDM programs, which right now are car share, bike share, and EcoPass. But the project will continue to pay property taxes, and so those services, the EcoPass, car share, bike share, or whatever the district feels is the most appropriate, it could be mobility as a service, it could be new programs in the future, will continue, they'll continue to be part of that district and get those services. So I just want to clarify that it's not site-specific, it's part of a district, and this is a benefit of all, for all the properties within the district.
That's great, thank you.
A few quick things. So the district board gets to decide how to spend that money, so they could change over time the program, to tune it, as you're saying. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is, all the parallel parking that you see on the streets, that was expressly designed to help with pickup and drop-off for Uber and driverless cars, if that comes, but car share right now.
Well, and it also makes it more pedestrians-friendly. That's what we did up in North Boulder, and it makes it great. And I really like it, and I think having cars parked on streets is a much better thing to do than having structures, and so...
Totally agree.
Yeah. Okay, so I have another question or comment, it's on affordable commercial space, and it has to do with your potential tenants. And I know it's probably way too early at this point to identify those tenants, but what's your, what are your thoughts with respect to local versus national-type tenants? And Mary referred to a company we just, a longtime company that has been a mainstay of Boulder who's closing, and we just lost another one maybe a month ago. So what are your thoughts about that?
Sure. As I indicated in July at the presentation among the finalists, we had sort of an interesting opportunity, again, thanks to Mary, who encouraged us on our Arapahoe project to reach out to small businesses and nonprofits. We had a surfeit of them. We had more interested in our Arapahoe project than we could sit down with comfortably over a period of months. And so it was that surplus of potential commercial affordable candidates that we first reached out to when conceptualizing our Pollard program. And they are reflected in our proposal. So we reached out to people like Andrew Rose at Boulder Emotional Wellness, and Emily Isaacs at the Women's Wilderness Institute, and sat down and said, what kind of space are you interested in, and what kind of rents, and how might we partner with you? We also sat down with Margot Josephs from the city, who helps to manage the TreeOp program, working with Bridge House, bringing homeless men into Makerspace to take Emerald Ashbore waste and convert it into value-added products. We'd love to see a Makerspace at this site. So we essentially started out with a handful of, let's call them illustrative businesses and nonprofits, but our intent would be to layer on those restaurant and retail of, say, a bigger scale, more robust or aggressive. Whether there's national credit retail at the site, TBD. But this is a group deeply committed to the economic future of this city, and is not necessarily enamored of what's happened to the Pearl Street Mall over the years. We would love to continue to see unique and indigenous enterprises here be able to thrive.
Great. So I have a couple of questions on housing. And I was wondering, you know, if you go to the packet, now I can't, there it is, and I'm on packet page 11, and it's the, your development housing data table. And I'm looking at the yellow table that talks about affordable ownership. And I know in affordable ownership, people who are making 100% AMI, there are 29 units. But there's no, none for 70% or 80%. And is there any way to try to get that? I mean, because those are, those are people who are almost there, and really need, would like a stable home, and would like to own their homes. And I'm just wondering if there's some ability to kind of look at those AMIs and get it a little bit lower, because I think, I think there's a lot of people who could use that, so...
Lisa, there might be. I don't want to commit to saying yes, there could be. Again, our intent is to work really closely with Kurt, and Michelle, and Kristen, and Beth at DOH, to work the numbers, to work closely with Laura and BHC, to figure out the optimal mix across the low mod and middle. We think we've presented an economic and feasible model with our program mix to date. There might well be some tweaking on the margins that we could do. We see that as the work of our collaboration going forward. Our intent was to win this project so that we had the opportunity and privilege to be able to sit down as developer, master developer, with staff, and working eye-to-eye, figure out the optimal mix.
Okay. No, that's great. I just wanted to bring it up.
Sure.
And then I have a question about the 35 co-op cohousing units. Can you tell me what those are? I mean, I know what co-op, and I know what cohousing, but I don't know what the 35 units means. Is it 35 co-ops? Is it, you know, 35 cohousing? How many people are in each unit?
You bet. And I'll leave that to Brian, and give you the layperson's definition, which is, it's a co-op, essentially boarding house-type living arrangement embedded in a cohousing building. So two types of habitation within one structure. Brian?
Yeah, Brian Bowen, Catus Architracer. It's a, I'm glad you asked that question, because it's a really interesting opportunity for us. It's the first opportunity I know of in the country where we've done a purpose-built cohousing community with a co-op embedded inside it. There's some other examples of this happening around, and so there are a few things that have been, you know, challenging in terms of innovating this housing type. Right now, we think we're going to have five of the 35, or the 15 co-op units, is actually counting as a five-unit equivalency through the Land Use Code, the way they count the co-op units. And so we're thinking that the way it's going to be structured is that we're going to have probably those co-located on one floor, so that when you leave, and the structure for those is like really more of a boarding room, sort of bedroom-type situation with shared bathroom, shared kitchen. And so they'd flow out into some shared space that's really for the co-op, and then that would then flow off into the common house kind of space for the cohousing community. And there's a lot of really interesting conversation going on around how to structure that, so it's really socially sustainable right now, between us and Boulder Housing Coalition, BHP, and also ZOLO. And the idea, though, is that we really need to activate those common spaces, so that the cohousers go there, and the co-op folks also go there, and, you know, co-mingle with each other. These projects are all about the choreography of people's days and how you really design that in, so that there's, you know, opportunities for casual social interaction that are really positive. And that ties into how we're going to design common spaces to run along the Paseo, so that connects people to people who are circulating across the site, how the courtyard relates to that. And there are maybe four, or five, six really interesting precedents in terms of cohousing projects that have been done in the last four or five years, that are four- or five-story unit urban cohousing communities, so they're not the sort of like Back to the Land or sort of farm-style houses in a prairie kind of scenario, they're really more urban-designed projects. So I think there's a lot to work with.
No, I'm very excited that this is in this project, so, and we asked you, I think some of us said, please try this. But I still am wondering, when you say 35, is that like Sam and I have a room, or...
You could.
Okay, you know...
Yeah, so I mean, that...
Me and my partner have a room.
Yeah, let me tell you about the unit mix. So inside the co-op, there would be basically single units and double units, so, you know, a couple could be there, or a single person could be in one of those rooms. Outside of there, there'd be efficiencies, you know, micro-units, we're looking at two, one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms. And so inside that one building, there'll be a pretty huge diversity of unit types. And we think that that's going to be the kind of thing that really lets people live, you know, across generations and across, across periods in life. We're seeing, my company gets a lot of phone calls from both young folks who want to do co-ops, and older folks who want to do co-ops, there's a huge push for the senior co-op movement as well. And so I think that's going to be really helpful. And actually, one little, like, last nuance on that is that, one of the reasons we decided to make that building entirely rental was so that the tenure of people who are living there might line up more compatibly between the co-op and the cohousing units. So that's a little bit of an unusual thing in the cohousing world, but it's very common in the co-op world. So there's a place where we're starting to blend those two things together quite a bit. And we will be doing the full, you know, participatory design process to get people involved with that. And we have to contrive that a little bit, too, in the context of Lytech funding and nondiscrimination rules and stuff like that.
No, that's great. So my last...
Lisa, can I just jump on here? How many, approximately how many people would be in this building?
I would say about 65 to 70 would be the guess I would have right now.
Including Sam and Lisa.
If Sam and Lisa are there, 62.
We'll have our own rooms, thank you.
So I, if I may jump in as well, I had another question.
Well, I have one more, but if you want to ask about the...
About the...
Yeah, co-op, co-op-related. Well, actually cohousing-related.
It's interesting that you said that it's all going to be rental, because typically cohousing is ownership, and the people start from the ground up, working together in its design. So I guess it's being invented, then?
It is being invented. And I think, you know, when we first started doing cohousing communities 17, 18 years ago, the ethic was really that you would drag people through the most exhaustive design process possible, and through that difficulty, they would forge these great relationships. And so, but times really changed, and, you know, now people have, you know, every time I do a cohousing project, the people who live there have already been to 10 other cohousing projects. And so the work of trying to figure out what you're going to do in the common house is really more like a study of what people do in common houses, and how do you want to tweak it, as opposed to this imagination of like, how would you conceive of a space like that? And so we've really moved away from, I mean, the participatory design process is still absolutely part of the process, but we've put more emphasis on doing other things besides that, facilitation trainings, working on policy, group effort at projects on the site, and fun, turns out to be a really good thing to do.
We wouldn't know about that.
Exactly. Other people outside this room are having fun, too. But we have used, you know, cohousing principles on some affordable housing projects that were Lytech-funded in environments where we didn't have the benefit of that involvement in the design process, and I think we've been able to overcome that pretty well. When I go back to those projects five, seven years later, you know, people who are running those projects say, you know, it's really weird, everyone here knows each other. Like, wow, that's good, that's what we were shooting for. So I think there's other ways to skin the cat.
Okay, you have one more question?
Yeah, and this has to do with the public process. And so you're going after Lytech funding, you're going after non-competitive, so I assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I assume you'll go into that process or that application knowing how many units you're going to be getting. And, and so that'll be a given from the very beginning, based on your economic analyses, correct? So how do you envision doing a public process, or what kind of public process? Because in recent past, we've had public processes, but I feel like we haven't put all the cards on the table, so the public isn't really knowledgeable of what has to happen at the very beginning. And so we've gotten comments that their participation has not been very, very well-spent. And so, and I really don't want to have, I'm excited about this project, I don't want to have people butting heads about this. And so I want to make sure it's done in as good, clear, collaborative, in intentional way as possible. So can you describe how you'll handle the public process?
Sure, and Bill can add further. We are as committed, I think, Lisa, as you and counsel is, to making sure that folks feel like they know about and are being heard, as the redevelopment of this part of Boulder and this site in particular goes forward. You know, we feel good about how Kurt and his colleagues handled the RFP. We certainly, as an applicant, felt like it was a very open and inclusive process. It was not an easy RFP to respond to, as staff knows well, and there were several meetings We are now, of course, engaging in specific discussions, negotiations really, with staff, so that we can get down to brass tacks and come back here and present to you a viable and exciting proposal. What I can say right now is, our relationship with staff, our diverse team, most of whom are based here, including BHP, BHC, Catus, the architect of note when it comes to co-op and cohousing, we think we've already got on our team some terrific, let's call them channel captains, folks who are tapped into different constituencies, parts of this particular community, to ensure that as we move forward month to month, we are staying in touch with those key stakeholder groups and constituencies. Indeed, tomorrow is really our kickoff meeting with BHP, BHC, and Catus, to begin to really talk about what the co-op cohousing building program looks like, including, Mary, the public participation piece. So we have already specced for Brian, given his expertise, which is of a national stature. Brian will help choreograph some of those discussions, charrettes, meetings, that even though perhaps not conventional or traditional, starting from scratch, ground-up, ownership included, we can vary the theme, given the requirements of this project, but still engage and include, vis-à-vis the cohousing-coop piece. We intend to work closely with BHP as we work through our Lytech and related applications and processes, to make sure that low-mod issues and constituencies are heard and are part of this process. So so far on the team, we think we've got terrific leaders and representatives of many constituencies that we believe will satisfy ultimately a robust test, litmus test, when it comes to the participation.
From a more technical process standpoint, I mean, we've seen the issues that happen when you have a project that's already committed to by CHAF, but it's not approved yet, and how's the public feel about it? Luckily, we are in a very different situation, in that we have the Form-Based Code. So that's one of the things that's supposed to help with that, because we all have a sense of what's allowed from a mass and kind of bulk standpoint, also where we should have public spaces, where there should be parks, where we should have interfaces with other parts of the city, and how those interfaces should work. So that's a big help. One of the things that was kind of discovered in the public, I'm going to get the name wrong, Public Process Participation Working Group?
Very good, public, yeah, very good.
I may be off by six or seven words, but they, you know, we have read through that, and we will, you know, I think the outreach, some of the ways they say to meet with the community are really good ones. But one of the things it points out is, if everybody can be on the same page of, in terms of the goals, to start, you're on much stronger ground, which we've always found that to be the case. The Form-Based Code gives us a leg up in that regard, because we've just gone through that as a community, you guys have approved it. And so to that end, you're allowed to ask for variances from the Form-Based Code for various things. We don't think that we have any in this. We tried really hard to make sure that, you know, at least all of the big things, and you know, we haven't had a chance to go through it with staff, and Carl Geiler is really the expert on staff of that. We've been through the process before, but we think these buildings, they're all, none of them are longer than 150 feet, stuff like that. So we tried to eliminate as much as we could in terms of what we're asking that could drive a, you know, kind of a community issue.
No, and I'm, you make a great point about the Form-Based Code, and I hadn't thought about that, but yes, and that was one of the reasons we went for Form-Based Code. But I'm just glad you're committed to a thorough public process, and that you know about the PPWG, so...
So that's, so that's great. In terms of time check, y'all, we have, I'm done, good. We have Aaron in the jan, and then...
We have Aaron in the Jan, and then, this has been great, I think you're getting a sense of us, of where we're at, through our questions, but hopefully, we can wrap this up relatively shortly.
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. So, the, is your intention for all of the commercial space to be the affordable in nature, or is there some that would not be?
Yeah, our intention, as we've stated in the proposal, is that 21,000 square feet of affordable commercial space, permanently affordable.
And that's all of it?
With that.
And that's all the commercial space?
That's all the commercial space. Again, whether we end up tweaking in terms of square footage and affordability is up to discussion and negotiation with staff, but our intent is to deliver what we've said in that proposal.
Understood, great. And then, I said that the partners, or potential partners, that you highlighted in your application were primarily nonprofits, office uses, things like that, but I know one of the intentions, I think, in the Form-Based Code is to have retail that's activating the street, you know, providing active uses and things like that. So, I heard you mention restaurant before, is, are you keeping an eye on that and that tenant mix, to have that mix of active uses and office uses?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
The organizations we offered up in the proposal were those that we had the privilege and benefit of talking to early on in a rather contracted application process. But our intent is to open the field, and indeed, as Kurt suggested, many on staff are really interested in this subject, and we look forward to working with them and figuring out how to govern the process of selecting and designing, and then ultimately making decisions about the ideal mix of tenants. But the urban design mandate, to create a really active and exciting urban place, where people want to be walking around and moving about, that's, that's the goal. To do that affordably is yet another goal embedded in it.
Great, thank you. So, my last question is for staff. Just mentioning that the potential for a geothermal system over the entire site is inhibited by the prohibition against private utilities under the right-of-way. And do you know if that's something that's required 100% for technical reasons, or if there might be some flexibility in this situation to look at being flexible?
I'll let Edward respond to that.
Edward Stafford, Development Review Manager for Public Works. It's a combination of items, technicals certainly a concern with limited right-of-way space and accommodating the necessary utilities and the variety of things that already have access. It is also currently strictly prohibited in the Boulder Revised Code. There is some internal conversation, and we'll probably be bringing, heading forward to council to consider some modifications to that for certain limited crossings of right-of-ways, but we're still working on that in particular right now, recognizing that there are some projects like this that maybe bring some things forward. But we also want to be very cautious about what we allow within the right-of-way and easements that we don't detract from the initial public need nor create a public safety hazard, which is always a concern when you add something where it's not expected to be found, where we may be doing emergency digging and repairs. So, it's a variety of issues that are to be considered for it.
Great, yeah, that makes absolute sense. And just my little bit of feedback would be, if there is a way to allow them to do district-wide energy system that does not imperil public safety or the public utilities, I think it's worth considering.
Is that, anybody disagree with that sentiment?
No.
I think that's probably, yes, widely held. Okay, Jan?
In light of the fact that we've gone over the term, I'm going to waive my question and take it offline, and I'm going to go ahead and move that we authorize the city manager to issue a letter of intent to negotiate a master development agreement with Zokolo Community Development as a master developer of the property located on the northeast corner of 30th and Pearl Streets, based on the proposal dated June 15, 2017.
Second.
Whoa.
We're going to let the mayor choose.
I think it was Aaron.
And I guess if I was just talking, first of all, I'd like to thank all four organizations for putting together the proposal. I'm sure they worked very, very hard on it, and put in a lot of creative thinking, so I'd like to thank all of them. I'd like to congratulate this team for really being creative. I think it's, it's really a very good project, and I think we've heard that all along. One of the things I love about it is the whole building for co-op and co-housing. I think that demonstrates that we are following up on something. When we passed the co-op ordinance, we had a lot of people say, why don't you put it down on 30th Street, you know? Think, and we'd never do that. And here we are, we're going to try it out. So, I think that's wonderful. So, I really, hats off for your creativity. Thanks, Kurt, for all your work on this. And I think the real key here is to develop something that will be a true partnership, like the CEO talked about, because I think that can show that we can have a great relationship with a developer and, and make it, you know, kind of a best-in-class situation.
Aaron?
I'll be brief. It's an exceptional proposal. You know, when you put out an RFP like this, you're hoping that you'll get something innovative like what you all put together, and here it is. So, hats off, and good luck with the negotiations, and I really hope to see all this come to fruition.
Mary? And I want to double ditto what Aaron just said. I just want to especially thank you for the affordable commercial effort. I think it's timely and much needed.
So, ditto all that, great, fantastic project.
Thank you very much, all of you. I do want to make just a different comment altogether, and this follows up on that line of questioning I had, and that is, you know, when we talked about before, as we were doing the, the discussion, we just voted recently on the inclusionary housing, you know, changes, and we talked about how, well, you know, we can't address the middle income fully in that one, and that, that's a, it's just a, it's just one of the many tools in the toolbox we had. Well, I, you know, I think we heard, perhaps some of us for the first time tonight, that there are some incentives out there, and maybe they're not, I mean, who knows how long they'll last, but there's some incentives out there on the affordable side that, that are, you know, helping to balance that up, but again, we're still missing on the middle. And, and so, you know, where is that tool that we're going to find to help us pick up there? And I'm not hearing it. And so, I challenge this project to think about, you know, being creative and figuring out, well, can we try something different in the city of Boulder, along Bill's suggestion of, you know, Boulder, Boulder may need to lead the way here, but also thinking about, you know, what can we do to fix something that we continue to hollow out with this project as well? So.
I'm just going to jump in and echo, but also, I guess on affordability, this is, if I got this right, 63% permanently affordable, yay, great work, and folks in all of those classes need affordable housing. So, the middle income remains a conundrum, and we'll keep working on it, but I, I think this is a winner for lots of people, so take nothing away from this project, that's great. And again, in addition to the co-housing stuff and the commercial affordable, which is also really cool that you're piloting that, I underscore previously noted enthusiasm for also being a demonstration project on some of these sustainability concepts, like the heating district, and seeing what we can do there. I think that's very exciting as well.
Yep, so I'll echo much of what's been said before, it is a really exceptional project. So, hopefully, you'll be able to do some of the pioneering things, as Anne just mentioned. I would put out a thought at the very lowest end of the spectrum, I don't know that this is plausible or feasible, but some of those very low-income housing units, if there's a way to have permanent supportive housing, one of the things that we're really looking for is exits from our homeless providers, and so, if there's any way to think about permanent supportive housing or any other facility, maybe it's also in the commercial space, depending on, you know, what kind of nonprofits are served there, to serve the people at the lowest end of the income spectrum. So, I just wanted to get that out there. I know it's a lot to ask, because there's already a lot in this project, but there's so much focus on affordable housing here, that if there's some way to add something as far as exits from our homeless service providers, that would be great, too. Thank you.
And I'll just add that I'm very excited, I think everybody else is, but I look at this also in a, in a longer term, and I can remember, we used to have different subcommittees on council, and I was on the affordable housing one, and I did that with Tom Eldridge. And Tom Eldridge and I, we were on the Affordable Housing Committee when we first started talking about Pollard being an affordable housing site. And I'm getting goosebumps, because this was just a vision that we wanted to have, we both, Tom was from Chicago, I was from Kansas City, train stations, big thing, and we just, our vision was that there would be some affordable commercial on the first floor that would meet the needs of the people who are going to live there, and then that there would be a mix of housing upstairs from that, and people would eventually get to use a train, but also have this, this kind of very urban experience where you really are an urbanite, and you don't need these cars and, and other things. And, and so, I think we, we brought that idea out in, or we started negotiating, and Molly was, was my, that must have been like 2001, 2002, something like that, and we had so many meetings about that, and it's 2017 now, and just get it done, and it's happened. I'm just, I'm just really excited about this, and this is turning out much better than I ever envisioned it, and I, I'm sure Tom would be there, too. So, I just want to thank everybody, and I'm really excited about this.
Okay, then, we have a motion, we have talked at length, shall we vote? Hands, all those in favor? Tis unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comments and the thoughts.
Yep. Thank you.
Your next item is a regional transportation update.
That just took so long. Are they kicking out Tom? Is that what's going on here?
We are, we're kicking out the city attorney.
You get to go home, really.
Because we need three spots.
Okay, so while they get set up, I'm going to go ahead and introduce this, and I, you can, guys can blame this next bit on me a little bit. There is so much going on in regional transportation, and there's so many staff involved, but there's also so many council members involved in different pieces of this conversation, that I thought it was worthwhile for us to make sure we're all on the same page. There's a lot of big conversations happening out there with other cities, and whether it's statewide funding ballot measures to these arterial bus rapid transit projects, that I thought it would be really helpful for us to all come together around and remind ourselves of what our priorities are, on what we have at stake as a community, and what we need to be pushing for within these regional conversations. So, that, that was sort of some of the impetus, and a lot of great things are happening, but there's a lot also in play here that we need to make happen.
And I think that for those of us who are advocating for Boulder's transportation priorities at the regional organizations, it's really helpful to have the council give us all of your input, so that we're carrying the flag forward for the whole council and not just trying to represent what makes sense to us. So, it's.
Oh, that, yes.
So, I think we're ready, and we've got our gold Boulder team here today, pretty much the whole team, a few, few missing, but Kathleen Brackey is going to start it off.
Oh, hey, you know what? I forgot, since we didn't do public comment. On the previous measure, we did not hold a public comment period on the previous motion, which is my bad. So, pause for a moment. I think we don't have anybody in the public, but.
We have a couple of members.
I would like to see if anybody, sorry about this, if anybody out there wanted to speak to the previous matter, which was about the 30th and Pearl Development Project. Okay, my bad, come on down. Yep, no, I got too excited. You have three minutes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Donna George, I live at 4661 Tallyhoe Court. Actually, when I saw this in the newspaper, I was shocked. I was like, why are they donating the land they already own to a private developer? The land was bought with affordable housing funds. If you compare this to Palo Park, which was a dedication in a neighborhood for a park or a school, the city bought that land and then sold it to BHP, and it was 100% affordable housing. The people there wanted more for sale units, but were told they couldn't get them. And then, if you look at Castro, put out by Boulder Housing, Boulder County Housing Authority, this also has some retail sites, and it is also 100% affordable. So, why on earth are we selling land we already own and giving it to a private developer that is not even going to put 100% affordable housing on the site, when there's already a lot of market rate in the area? There's already the 30 to like 80% at like Boulder Junction or whatever, so this would be a prime spot for, I even asked Boulder County Housing Authority to put in a proposal, and they didn't do it, because they said Boulder Housing Partners was working on this. So, why aren't Boulder Housing Partners getting together with Habitat for Humanity and building, the Habitat community can build housing for your workers, who we always say, the city workers can't afford to live here. So, if the city owns a property, have Habitat for Humanity homes, that they can sell to the workers, that are always, will always be deed-restricted. I don't understand why we're going to a private developer. It makes absolutely no sense to me. I do like the idea of, of putting affordable retail space here, I think it's a great idea. Also, Brian Bowen is on the planning board, and his architectural firm is associated with this project. Isn't that a conflict of interest, and should be considered in your vote? So, is this project building housing just for Google employees? Because Google just bought the land diagonal across the street for $130 million. Why isn't this parcel of land being treated the same as Palo Park and other land that was owned by housing authorities, and 100% affordable housing put on it? And it could be a mix of different affordable housing. You can even have middle income on here. Why on earth is it going to where it's not going to be 100% affordable housing? It makes zero sense. I don't think that you should sign the letter of intent. I think you should go through Boulder Housing Partners and Habitat for Humanity and build homes for your workers that we all keep complaining that can't afford to work here, can't afford to live here. It makes, that makes more sense to me. So, please rebuild, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming down, and I'm sorry, I got that out of order.
And Donna, can I suggest, I think if you, I'd encourage you to send an email to, with that question, to council, and I'm sure Kurt Freunhopper would be happy to respond with some information.
What'd he say?
Please rebuild, you mean?
No, but there's reasons, there's reasons why we, we can't develop at this scale without some help, so.
Yeah, I'll just add, I mean, there's a couple of things here. Boulder Housing Partners is involved, as I understand it, in this project, and, and so, the issue is, you can't build Habitat for Humanity, in part, they can't build at the density to create the number of units that we're talking about here, and the, and part of the, you know, the volume of affordable units is, is much greater than you could develop with sort of Habitat for, for Humanity homes. And the, the other issue is, the city's just not a developer. I mean, and so, part of the, the challenge also is getting someone to come in, and that's why the city did an RFP process, was to find out who could, who could produce the, the most number of affordable units with the greatest community benefit for the city of Boulder, knowing that the city of Boulder can't do it itself, because we're not developers. And so, this one, the whole idea was to pick out of all the developers who could deliver the greatest product, the greatest benefit, working with Boulder Housing Partners, and that's, that's what we achieved here.
And we're going to have some 200 units of permanently affordable housing, so a lot of that will be workforce. So, thank you, appreciate your perspective and you coming down, and with that, we're going to turn back to the other matter, but appreciate that. Okay, sorry about that, y'all.
Great, well, thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to be here tonight and talk about regional transportation and transportation funding, very important and very timely topics. Before we get started, I'd like to really thank the councils. Mayor Jones and so many of you are involved on a regular basis with all of these regional initiatives. Councilmember Young, your work on the RTD Pass Program Working Group is a tremendous lift.
lift and very important part of this. And also Councilmember Brockett and Councilmember Applebaum for the work with the Dr. Cog Denver Regional Council of Governments Board. It's a, it's a lot of work, and we really greatly appreciate all that you do to support these initiatives as we go forward. I'll introduce the team that's here this evening. So with us is Mike Sweeney, the Director of Public Works for Transportation. Also Natalie Stifler and Jean Sanson from the Go Boulder team, both senior transportation planners, and will be providing part of the presentation this evening. Also Carl Castillo is here as well. He's an important part of our team. Well, he was here. I think he's downstairs, helping us on these regional policy initiatives. So it truly takes a team effort with staff and working with council to bring these about. I'd also like to recognize Bill Rigler, who's the Chair of the Transportation Advisory Board, and he was here earlier as well. So anyway, we will, we will jump right in. Also want to share a good news item. This week, we're celebrating the Boulder Second Annual Bus to Work Day, which is on Thursday. So again, thank you to Councilmember Yates and Brockett for bringing this idea forward last year. It was the first annual Bus to Work Day, and now the initiative is actually spread to be Boulder County-wide. So Boulder's leadership is really paying off and expanding Bus to Work Days to be all of Boulder County. So it's pretty exciting, pretty cool. We've got a record number of registrants, and there'll be breakfast stations and lots of different things to celebrate transit on Thursday. So anyway...
Kathleen, how much will the bus cost in Boulder on Thursday morning?
Local fares will be free, and then the hop and the flex will also be free.
Yeah, that's a pretty good price, thanks.
Yes, exactly. It's a perfect price.
You got the best part.
Right. So lots to celebrate, for sure. So tonight, we're here to talk about two particular areas of transportation, and that's regional transportation and funding. Those are two key areas of our transportation master plan. I'll provide just a brief kind of policy overview, and then we want to dive in. Jean will be providing updates on two key corridor initiatives, East Arapahoe and State Highway 119, known as the diagonal. And then Natalie will be providing an update on our Transit Service Delivery Study, and then I'll be providing an overview of transportation funding and kind of our, our challenges and opportunities ahead. But before we get started in all of those details, I think it's important to talk about the why we do what we do for regional transportation, and it's really centered in our broad community goals. People are traveling to work, to live their lives, to go to school, and so very much connecting to our community sustainability framework, and not just the part about being an accessible and connected community, but really supporting our economic vitality goals and our environmental goals. And so all of the work that we do rolls up into the Boulder Valley Transportation Plan, Comprehensive Plan, excuse me, too much transportation, and supports these broader goals. So I, I think that's an important context for us to keep in mind. In addition, a, a big part of why we do what we do is to support Boulder's climate commitment. The greenhouse gas emissions from surface transportation are a, a big contributor to that issue, and we have a lot of opportunities and responsibility to go to work on to help reduce the emissions from traveling and help provide mobility options and choice for people. And it's an area where I think our, our land use, our transportation and technology all have an opportunity to come together to help solve this problem. So all of our work for transportation rolls up into the Transportation Master Plan. We call this Boulder's Transportation Master Plan. It's really community-based and community-created. We've had a Transportation Master Planner, TMP, since the 90s. We consider it to be a living document, and we update it on at least every five years. And as we go forward, we look at what are our measurable objectives and how are we doing? So it's not just a plan that creates a vision or a sort of just goal statements. It's really about creating an action plan and going to work on those actions and seeing what those results create. And so every two years, we do the Transportation Report on Progress, and we call that our report card to ourselves and our report card to the community. How are we doing in, in reaching those community goals? And how, where are the areas that are working well, and where are the areas that we're struggling? And to be honest, the areas that we're really struggling in has to do with regional transportation, and particularly the commute trips. We've made a lot of great progress, and I should say the Boulder community has made a lot of great progress over the decades to travel by walking, biking and transit for a lot of the daily trips. But the trips that we have a challenge with are the longer distance regional commute trips. So it's, it's another reason why we're focusing in this particular area and why it's so important. Within our Transportation Master Plan, we have five different focus areas. And the one, again, that we're centering on this evening is our regional travel. And when we are, we talk about our regional travel policies, it's really recognizing Boulder as an economic center in the Denver metro area, in the Front Range, Regional Employment Center, and that the regional travel is increasing. People are traveling farther distances for their daily trips, certainly for commute trips. And how do we continue to expand the choices that people have to make those trips by multimodal options and safe options? Another important policy within the TMP is, is not just what we do, but how we go about it. And so it's really centered on a coalition-based approach. That we have a lot of needs within the community and a lot of needs regionally, but we know we need to use a partnership model to get there. And the U.S. 36 Mayors and Commissioners Coalition, again, we really appreciate your work on that, that Zan. It's a, it's a big lift, and it's an ongoing lift. And we work very closely with Boulder and Boulder County, and Louisville, and Longmont, and Erie, and Lafayette, and Westminster on these initiatives. And we work with commuting solutions that helps connect us with the business, excuse me, the business community in our region. And so it's how we all come together to center on these initiatives so that we're able to accomplish both our local and regional goals. And I think one of the projects that we point to as a great role model is U.S. 36. And we see and we're enjoying the multimodal improvements that were created there, all opened in 2016. The bus rapid transit, the express lanes, the commuter bikeway. It's really a high-functioning corridor, and it's improving the travel time for everyone today, whether you're traveling by bus or you're traveling in the express lanes, the general-purpose lanes. The results are really showing that it's improving the travel time and reliability for everyone. And I think it's not only a good role model for the outcome in terms of the infrastructure and the, the transportation demand management programs, it's really a great model about the how. And as many people know, it's taken over almost 15 years or more for this coalition approach to bring forward the improvements on U.S. 36 and bring together local and regional and state and federal funding to bring those projects to life. So we see U.S. 36 as a model, not only in terms of the project, but the, the approach. This is just sort of an illustration that helps reinforce that message about our, our regional travel and the context that we're in, and how much travel is coming in and out of the Boulder community each day. And that information is what then feeds into our planning processes. So this map is the, sort of articulates Boulder's renewed vision for transit that was developed back in 2014 as part of our Transportation Master Plan update. And it, again, it helps to illustrate the, the local system improvements that are needed, as well as the regional improvements. So the local is primarily shown here in blue. The regional routes are shown in red and highlight the arterial bus rapid transit routes on 119 and 7, and South Boulder Road, for example. And these regional routes come forward from RTD's Northwest Area Mobility Study. So we've integrated our local planning and the regional planning to identify this network of improvements. And while this may look like more of a service map, it's really identifies both, or kind of a holistic approach of looking at capital investment, as well as service planning, as well as programmatic elements, and the importance of how they need to work together. So these are just some quick examples of, of projects that have come forward and were making progress in areas since the 2014 TMP. We've talked about the U.S. 36. The Flatiron Flyer has launched. The ridership on the Flatiron Flyer is over 45% higher than the prior B routes that were operating there. The interregional flex service is the picture in the lower corner. There are over 100 riders a day on the express service operating between Fort Collins and Longmont and Boulder. And then certainly continuing to work on the pass programs of a very popular neighborhood and business EcoPass program, and we want to be able to expand that and create more access to it with the Community Pass. And then continuing to work on the hop, because it's important to not only think about the regional routes coming into Boulder, but then how do people travel around Boulder when they're here? What are those first and final mile connections? And how are we layering that high-frequency local network to help with people's mobility throughout the community? So we have a lot of work to do. We're making some progress in some areas, and we want to continue the momentum going forward and address the challenges that we're facing. Another, kind of a new area that came out of the Transportation Master Plan is the creation of mobility hubs. And it's really kind of a next generation, rather than doing standalone park and rides, it's how do we integrate the regional and local transit into one, I call it one-stop shopping? So you can come into the community, you can hop off your regional route and have easy access to bike share, car share, transportation network companies, and local routes, and that it's integrated with our land use and our urban design. It's not a standalone facility, but it's very much an integral part to our placemaking throughout the community. So there's, there's a lot that we're working on, and the idea is that it's all connected. Each of the pieces of the puzzle, whether it's transit or roadway projects or commuter bikeways, transportation demand management programs, it all needs to come together to create the place that supports all of the different needs of the community and helps support our role as part of the larger regional kind of ecosystem. So with that, this is just sort of a summation of our, our regional policies. Again, they're centered on our adopted plans and strategy documents, and we take this coalition approach. We work closely, in addition to the MCC, on a lot of Policy and Technical Advisory Committee meetings as well. And then we really center on what are those key regional priorities? We have a lot of local needs, and we have a lot of regional needs, but the idea is that we work together with our regional partners to focus on those key initiatives such as arterial BRT, EcoPass, and the commuter bikeways. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jean, and she can cover the corridor plans if there's any questions.
Why don't you keep going?
Okay. Thank you, and good evening. My name's Jean Sanson, Senior Transportation Planner with Go Boulder and Project Manager for the East Arapahoe Transportation Plan. So I'm going to just take control here. Give me a second.
There we go. It's all yours.
Great, thank you. Okay. So as Kathleen mentioned, State Highway 7 is one of our most important regional travel corridors. And we're working both at the regional level and at the local level to advance a multimodal corridor between Brighton on the east and downtown Boulder on the west. So at the regional level, the city is supporting the work of Boulder County's State Highway 7 Study, of which Mayor Jones is representing our community on the Policy Advisory Committee. And this study is taking a closer look, based on NAMM's recommendations, on BRT feasibility and operations, and also considering infrastructure improvements between State Highway 287 and 75th Streets. And initial study results indicate that BRT service is a viable regional transit option. The ridership forecasts are looking really, really good, and should be accompanied by other modal solutions, such as a regional commuter bikeway, and doing things like intersection improvements further east to address safety concerns and congestion. Now, at the local level, so you can, you know, kind of squint to the, to the west side and sort of that green study area, we're taking a very close look at the Arapahoe Corridor within Boulder as part of the East Arapahoe Transportation Plan. We're developing a long-range plan that will improve travel and mobility options for regional commuters, as well as for the people who are working out there today, living in the corridor, and those that will be in the future. So truly looking at a complete street design for the East Arapahoe Corridor.
Can I just jump in there? And if you, if you showed that map again. Okay. So Erie and Lafayette are building a ton, and so is Brighton. And so the idea is this, this corridor is going to be hugely traveled more and more and more in the future. And so just so you know, the, I think the challenge is how do you plan ahead, knowing these things take 15 years, so that you're going to, you'll be ready to accommodate that, but also make some improvements now that improve the quality of life and, and congestion now? And so what you said about intersection improvements, to me, I didn't realize what that meant. That means like figuring out how to have left turn lanes and things like that, you know, to widen things at the intersections, so you have longer turning queues, just so the through traffic can keep going, and you can better manage people that are turning on and off in key intersections as you get, as you imagine, as you travel through Lafayette and Erie. And that that will greatly improve travel through those corridors for at least in the near term, so the next two to five years. It will greatly improve things while we plan for, you know, the more fuller multimodal. I think also we very much want to see a regional bike, hopefully separated lane as part of that, just because we want, for the safety issue, and also because of the, you know, the increased interest in cycling. But I just want to put out that in the near term, that's kind of where the focus is, for the biggest bang for the buck, as we do that longer-term, 15-year, till you actually build it out thing. So, just to dumb it down, this is how I think.
Well, that raises the question for me about the communities out east. They have completely different approaches to their land use policies than we do here. And one might say that there's a mismatch in terms of what our goals are in terms of land use and how that intersects with transportation. So my question is, how do you reconcile that in terms of, and what I'm thinking is, you need, out east, you need lots of land for park and rides.
Yes. That's, that's an excellent question. And so I can't speak for the communities and their policies, but I think there's a general understanding that their development patterns look quite different than what we have further west. Two things. One is that as part of the regional State Highway 7 project, one of the first things that the county did is just look at the operations of the BRT itself. A next phase is going to be looking at station area planning along the corridor, so between Brighton and Boulder, and that would include the communities of Erie and Lafayette, and looking at those station areas and identifying appropriate locations for park and rides, as well as for the appropriate types of densities that would support transit, that would support transit in the corridor. So, you know, you're exactly right, just along 30, as you see along 36, appropriately located park and rides, particularly given the development patterns out there, will be an important part of that regional project.
And part of it is how do you get them to set aside that land now?
Right.
For the development that's coming? So they're designing their shopping mall with the park and ride at the intersection, knowing that they don't need to build it yet, but they're going to need to build it. So getting that land used locked in now?
Well, and just, just also their planning. So if you, you know, I think about like way down south where you have the, the office park, and I'm forgetting the, the name of the big office.
Denver Tech Center.
The Denver Tech Center, yeah. And then how it relates to the train stations where it just, it doesn't work. You got to walk a mile.
Yeah, yeah. Right. And yeah, and it's a real concern, particularly given the pace of development at some of those major intersections, is getting ahead of it and being able to identify and reserve that land. So we're working very closely in coordination with staff and elected officials along the State Highway 7 corridor, to the point where, and I was going to get to in the presentation, but the idea is that out of this work, the communities between Brighton and Boulder will be forming a State Highway 7 coalition, much along the lines of the U.S. 36 Mayors and Commissioners Coalition, and continue to work on those issues.
And get leverage federal funding to actually get some of this.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Okay. So moving on. So since we began this East Arapahoe planning process, we've been committed to the principles of the city's Public Participation Working Group recommendations, and we've undertaken a public engagement process that fosters meaningful contributions to this planning process. So as you'll note, as I go through the next set of slides, the sticky notes indicate where our process reflects those values, and we've incorporated them into the planning process. So let's start with the why. Why are we developing this plan? And quite simply, we're asking this question of our community. How do we move more people safely and efficiently through one of our busiest travel corridors? So with regional forecasts predicting as much as a 20% increase in traffic, we need to reorganize our streets to provide better travel options for commuters and for the greater number of people who are working and living in the corridor. And this has been a, you know, a very open conversation and generated a lot of good input, which I'll be sharing with you over the next few minutes. But let's take a look first at our planning process and schedule. So since May of 2016, we've been working with a 20-member community working group, and it's made up of a cross-section of community members. Everyone from small to large business representatives, neighborhood representatives, and interested community members. And they, along with our larger community, have been helping to guide the process and provide feedback to us at major milestones. Everything from drafting the planned goals... provide feedback to us at major milestones, everything from drafting the planned goals to developing and screening alternatives. And at this point in the process, where you see that we are here, we're considering a narrowed range of alternatives and have conducted a detailed technical analysis of these alternatives and we're sharing these results with our public and have been doing so since the spring, asking for input and feedback. Now, moving forward, we'll be recommending a preferred alternative with an implementation and phasing plan for review by council in the coming months.
Just real quick, have you included commuters in the, okay, what percentage of the 20 is, are commuters?
So, I would say that maybe a third of the business representatives do not live in Boulder. And what we've been doing to really reach out to hear the voice of the commuters, a couple of things. One is we've participated in the Boulder County State Highway 7 Public Meeting, so we provide information at those meetings and have really been incorporating the information we receive from those folks, many of whom work in Boulder but live outside of Boulder. The other thing that we do is we're out in the corridor a lot doing things like lunch and learn. So I'll be doing one, for instance, this Thursday at Boulder Community Health where we bring employees in and the hospital provides lunch. Most of the people I would say that we're speaking with are, do not live in Boulder. So that pop-up events, we're going to be doing something similar with Ball. So we're really making a very concerted effort to hear from that commuter perspective. So, these are the five planned goals and they support the five transportation master plan focus areas that Kathleen mentioned and they're being used to guide development of transportation improvement alternatives and the criteria by which we evaluate the alternatives. And while I won't go into each of the goals specifically, I just want to point out a couple of things. One is that the planned goal, the first one, of developing a complete street that offers people safe travel choices is directly tied to the city's Toward Vision Zero Initiative. So with safety, we use that as a lens through which we assess all alternatives. And you'll see that's something that comes up again and again in conversations with our community. The second point I'd like to make is also at the top and that relates to the funding goal, just recognizing, as Mayor Jones mentioned, that this is a long-range plan and it's going to require phased implementation over time. And so, as I mentioned, over the spring and summer months, we've been out in the community sharing a range of alternatives. And the renderings that you see at the top of this slide illustrate a range of transit and auto alternatives that basically range from maintaining the current configuration out on Arapahoe, which on the east end is, it's about six lanes. It varies depending on which segment of the corridor you're in, to the alternatives that you see on the right-hand side of that slide that would actually repurpose general traffic lanes for bus rapid transit. And then underneath that, along with these alternatives, we've been sharing the results, as I mentioned, of the detailed alternatives analysis, which is summarized here. And basically what this does is it compares the benefits, the impacts and the trade-offs associated with each. And when we're back in front of council in December, we'll be sharing this detailed evaluation with you all as well and the input and feedback we've received on it.
And?
Yes.
Will you have cost options on these because there seems to be a pretty significant range?
Yes, we do.
That would be great. Thanks.
And so at the bottom of the slide, what you see are cross-sections that illustrate pedestrian bicycle and amenity zone options, so basically the edge of the road. And these can be paired with any of the roadway alternatives above. And note that each of these options on the bottom show designated spaces for pedestrian and bicycles and each of the bikeway facilities are protected from traffic to a certain degree.
I'll let you do this page and then I'll ask my question.
Oh, okay. All right. So, I just want to spend a minute talking about how we're sharing this information. I touched on some of it. You know, in addition to working with our community working group, we've been using a variety of other means to share information, everything from neighborhood meetings to workshops with our community youth groups, which has been really interesting, working with our Growing Up Boulder and Youth Opportunity Advisory Board. I mentioned the lunch and learns that we've had and we're continuing to have along the corridor. And then just a host of sit-down one-on-one meetings with area businesses, as you see listed here. And as I mentioned, we're also participating in the State Highway 7 Project and have a pretty strong website and social media presence.
So, yeah, my question on engagement was about the level of engagement with RTD on their preference on the bus operations. Do they have a strong preference between those?
So, we are coordinating closely with RTD and we're really taking the lead on what that configuration looks like. And basically, it's on us to determine what that would look like, but given certain constraints that they are probably going to be working with if they are to be the operator of this future transit service, things like ensuring that we have right-hand boarded doors and that sort of thing. So there's some logistical issues related to vehicles and such. But the fact of the matter is, at this point in time, RTD does not have the money to implement this project, so it would be something that we would be phasing over time. But, you know, as far as RTD goes, they very much leave it up to the local jurisdictions to provide the infrastructure to run their service.
Makes sense. What about communities to the east? Because like if you pick, say, a center-running bus versus a bus on the sides, you'd probably want to have the same methodology throughout the area that you did a full implementation of BRT.
Yeah.
So what about, do other communities have input on what they might be interested in implementing?
Right. And so, communities to the east, so there's been a Planning and Environmental Linkage Study, basically, that's the infrastructure design for State Highway 7. That's been completed out to I-25, from 287 to I-25. And what that design is calling for is side-running bus rapid transit, or they would call it bus on shoulder. And then the study that the county is currently undertaking to look at 287 to 75th Street, one of the options is also looking at bus on shoulder. So again, that curbside running bus. And then within the city, again, to your point, yes, you want to be as contiguous as you can, not to say there aren't systems that do vary between side-running and center-running, particularly in more urban areas. We wanted to look at the sort of broad range of, you know, spectrum of different types of configurations. And as I'll share with you in a minute, there are a lot of constraints to center-running bus rapid transit. And I think that our community understands what those constraints are, particularly related to traffic operations. And we're not seeing a great deal of travel time savings, to be honest with you, for the center-running bus rapid transit. So at this point in time, it's looking more like from a technical analysis standpoint and community feedback standpoint, that the side-running bus rapid transit is looking like the more feasible option and is consistent with what's being planned further east.
Okay, thanks. I look forward to hearing more about it in December, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it.
So just quickly, here's just one example, the type of preference poll we've used at our community meetings, low-tech dot exercise, and when we ask for feedback on the alternatives. And as you'll note, now as I was just getting to Erin, that there are a large number of dots next to alternative three. So this would, in this alternative, we're looking at business access and side-running bus rapid transit. And what we're hearing from these meetings that we have with folks is the un-understanding that, based on the detailed analysis, this alternative offers a pretty high transit ridership with a lower cost, fewer traffic impacts, as I mentioned, as compared to center-running BRT, and has the greatest potential to be phased over time, which again is another limitation of looking at something like a center-running bus rapid transit. So, the business access and side-running bus rapid transit configuration would provide a transit travel time that's competitive with the automobile, but in fact, most likely would not degrade auto travel time and actually has the potential to decrease travel time for all commuters. And that's due in part to two factors. One is that we know that today the outside travel lanes are underutilized because drivers are choosing not to get in the outside lane to avoid getting stuck behind right-turning vehicles or buses. And the other factor is that by providing this high-quality BRT service that actually provides a competitive travel time, we may reduce the number of vehicles on the road itself, thereby opening up capacity. So, it's looking very favorable from a technical standpoint as well as from the type of feedback that we're receiving from our community members. Then when we look at the range of bicycle and pedestrian options we're considering, we asked community members the same question about the design, which one do you prefer? And this is after sharing all of the technical information. And there's really a preference for raised, protected bike lanes. And there are a couple of factors that go into that, one being creating greater visibility for cyclists. I would say more often than not, that's what I'm hearing as I'm out speaking to community members.
Raised bike lanes?
Raised, protected. And really what it gets to, the issue that it gets to is just creating more separation from general purpose traffic and greater visibility and ensuring that any facility that's designed would minimize driveway and intersection conflicts. And then I think as I mentioned at our one-on-one meetings with major employers in the corridor, what we're hearing from them is that their workforce is increasingly interested in and really asking for safe and convenient bicycle facilities on Arapahoe, which are very limited today. And as we share the results of the alternatives analysis with our community members, we've also asked them to indicate which results are most important in selecting a preferred alternative. So, ranging from safety to changes in travel mode share to forecasted transit and auto travel times, all of which is information that we've shared. And overwhelmingly, people say that pedestrian and bicycle comfort and access and safety are noted as the most important criteria in selecting a preferred alternative. A little bit more on what we're hearing, as Mayor Jones mentioned, interest in both short and long-term improvements. So yes, we want a long-term vision, but we also want to look at taking incremental steps to improve conditions out there today. And so as part of the plan, we'll be developing an implementation strategy that includes both short, mid and long-range strategies. Then again, there's also ongoing concern about automobile congestion, particularly further east, which is why it's so important, as Mayor Jones mentioned, that some of these intersection capacity improvements that the county is working on happen sooner rather than later to address those choke points for commuters coming into Boulder.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Would that be just working on the intersection? So, if you funnel in, or I guess you're not funneled and you kind of funnel out and you funnel back in, wouldn't that cause kind of a choke point there when you funnel it back into only one lane? Are we looking at expanding the number of lanes at all?
It's actually, we're not necessarily looking at expanding the number of lanes, but we are looking at creating greater capacity to move more vehicles through what's a limited intersection, right? So everyone's stopped at one time and you can only move a certain amount of vehicles through that. But if you can move more and then merge them back into that single lane, it actually would operate pretty efficiently with the addition of left-turn pockets where it's needed to access areas to the north and.
And do we have data, data that proves that?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. You know, I think about it, Arapahoe here, where we, where it goes from, I guess it's three lanes to one, and it's a little bit dangerous there.
What they found, the county's got some great data on this, is basically, once you get to the edge of Boulder, as you head out on Arapahoe, the traffic moves pretty well in between the big intersections, except for where people have to wait for people to turn. And so the idea is get more people through the stoplight and then it keeps going, especially the people that are turning. And it's pretty cool to look at the models, but yeah, it is, they have well documented it as kind of the biggest bang for the buck and one of the quickest things we can do to address the congestion, again, while we're looking at these longer-term land use choices that will accommodate kind of the future growth.
Yeah. Moving on, just a little bit more about what we're hearing. To the top bullet, integrating transportation improvements with land use and urban design, first and final mile connections and transportation demand management. So while I've been sharing some of these infrastructure improvements, the cross-sections, that's only one component of the plan. And we're very much looking at things like transportation demand management, mobility hubs that create first and final mile connections. For instance, we've been working proactively with our planning department as they updated the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. And our community working group, I think, was very instrumental in working with the planning staff to advocate for small area planning at 55th and Arapahoe, for example, which is now scheduled for the 2019-2020 timeframe. And that the build alternatives support existing and future development and to the point that they're not dependent on any one development proposal, but are adaptable to changing conditions, which is what we're trying to achieve. You know, the other point about the first and final mile connections is that the success of a regional BRT system will be dependent, very much so, on that easy first and final mile connection. So how do I get to the Flatiron Business Park? So, creating those mobility hubs that create that one-stop shop, as Kathleen was saying, or that seamless connection to a bicycle station or an electric vehicle station or shared use mobility options will be key and components of this plan. And then to the second bullet, allowing flexibility to incorporate things like HOV and innovative technologies like autonomous vehicles. We know that the future's going to look different. And so what we're doing as we think about these infrastructure designs is that we plan to accommodate changing technology. So for example, by creating a dedicated lane for what might now be bus, what might be in the future, bus rapid transit, and it could be at some point in the future, shared autonomous vehicles, we're creating that space to move more people safely and efficiently through the corridor. So just real quickly to recap the timeframe, so we will be back in front of you in December. And as I mentioned, some of the ongoing work related to State Highway 7 is continuing to grow and evolve and to the point of establishing a State Highway 7 Coalition. And we'll continue to work with our city departments and our agency partners moving forward. So, to switch gears, State Highway 119 is another one of our key NAMM's corridors. And so, as Kathleen mentioned, using the US 36 multimodal corridor as our model, RTD has started to work on a BRT study for State Highway 119. And CDOT has also stepped up to study managed lanes along the corridor, along with a commuter bikeway, so truly a multimodal corridor. We're at the very initial stages of both of these projects. So, the first Policy and Technical Advisory Committee meeting for this project was held in August. It will be an 18-month study and we are supporting it here at the City of Boulder, as well as Boulder County, and the City of Longmont and other participating jurisdictions and agencies. In this project, the BRT study, RTD's BRT study, will analyze alternative BRT improvement options between downtown Boulder and Longmont with the goal of advancing a locally preferred alternative. So, at the conclusion of the project, there will be preliminary engineering plans, environmental clearance for BRT improvements, as well as preliminary cost and funding strategies, which Kathleen will be touching.
Can I ask what managed lane means?
Right. So managed lane would be something along the lines of what you see on US 36, where it could be a toll facility along with an HOV facility and perhaps transit using the same lane.
And that's kind of a general?
Oh, I'm sorry, high occupancy vehicles, HOV.
Yeah. So, it is a general principle that any new capacity be managed so that we're not just building more roads.
So only high occupancy vehicles would go on it?
HOV, toll and bus, just like US 36. You know, like how they added a lane, but they made it be a managed lane. So, and that's the principle, is that we don't want to just widen highways anymore. We've learned from that. You know, I don't know, the T-Rex example, I don't know if that means anything to you. There was a big, huge investment in expanding, I guess it's I-25.
I-25, south of Denver.
And, I forget how many, within just a couple of years, it's, the congestion is just as bad. It's the, if you build it, they will come. And so it doesn't solve congestion. Managed lanes, however, have been proven to be a best practice. And so that's, that's the idea, is if you're going to add capacity, make it managed and you'll move, it's all about how, moving more people, not, yeah, so anyhow.
So, just real quickly, related to that, as I mentioned, we're just at the initial stages, but the draft purpose and need relates to things like, as we know, the increasing travel demand and, as Mayor Jones mentioned, increasing the person throughput through the corridor, providing safe solutions and reducing corridor transit travel time and just as importantly, reliability and also related to the first and last mile connectivity issue that we touched on earlier and identifying cost-effective options. So, very much along the lines of what we're looking at for other regional corridors such as State Highway 7 and have done on US 36.
And I sent the notes out from that meeting to all of you guys, the launch, so.
And so moving forward, next steps, the project team on the BRT study is going to be identifying BRT options, which could include dedicated lanes, it could include high-frequency and limited stop service, transit priority at intersections, enhanced station branding, et cetera, and other BRT features. And they hope to be out in the community in November, so pretty soon, with the first round of public outreach and then moving into later this year analyzing those options. And I think that's when CDOT will be initiating their managed lane and bikeway study, hoping to finish up in late 2018, possibly early 2019, with a locally preferred alternative and environmental clearance, which really kind of sets the stage to go out to look for additional funding for these projects. So, that leads to the funding question. At this point, RTD has $30 million allocated in their business plan for implementation in 2022. This would only, clearly only be part of what would be needed to implement BRT in the corridor, but it's money that could be leveraged. But there is a growing concern that their staff is currently proposing that this money be deferred. Again, Kathleen will be touching on that when she discusses the funding. But on an encouraging note, CDOT has identified But on an encouraging note, CDOT has identified 50 to 100 million or more in implementation funding following the completion of their study. So key messages, I think this sort of highlights some of the key messages related to our regional corridor plans, supporting the transportation master plan, mobility and safety goals, advancing the arterial BRT routes from the NAM study, creating real BRT that's high-quality experience, and pairing that with a commuter bikeway to truly make these regional multimodal commuter corridors, and integrating all the work we do with the land use and urban design placemaking, and some of the types of projects we were looking at earlier, when you were looking at 30th and Pearl. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mayor Jones to provide any additional thoughts or information that you might have related to these corridor plans.
I think I've been chiming in just fine. I guess, just to be clear, so this is the study that will, and the environmental clearance means that we can go and try to leverage this little bit of money to get federal funding to basically, hopefully in a shorter timeframe, sort of recreate the US-36 model, so that we really make the corridor between Boulder and Longmont sort of, you know, top of the class. And again, along with the regional bikeway, which I think is a public amenity people are asking for. So I think this is really exciting, and it's another great collaboration with our neighbors. So I think the next 18 months, that's what that focus will be.
Well, just to add to that, in terms, from a federal funding perspective, the focus right now and the opportunity is 119 and not Arapahoe. From the federal funds that we get through the Dr. Cog process, actually, Arapahoe's not eligible for funding in the next cycle, in the next, like, four or five years, but State Highway 119 is. And it's our prime focus right now in terms of advocacy at the regional level. Dr. Cog is trying to get the federal funds designated for that through a variety of kind of maneuvers. So that's the funding priority there at that level. And when we get to more funding, I have a question, but right now, Arapahoe's not eligible.
So people should know, this is our top priority regionally, coming out of Boulder.
So why is State Highway 7 not eligible for federal funds?
So in order to be eligible for federal funds through the transportation improvement process, you have to, a project has to be in the fiscally constrained regional transportation plan. And that project, it's like so bureaucratic, but Arapahoe is not on that list. And so part of what we need to make sure is that it gets on that list, so that it's eligible for future funding rounds. But you have to have already been on that list before this process starts.
So this is how Aaron spends his Wednesday
Thank you for explaining that clarification. So what needs to happen in the process so that 7 can get in this?
So there's an application process to get a project concluded in the regional transportation plan. Maybe Kathleen, you can talk about what we're doing there.
Sure. So you're absolutely right. It is the most complex, interesting chicken-and-egg cycle that you can describe, because you can't get on the list to get money until you're on the list, but you can't get on the list unless you have money. So it's really interesting. So that's one of the things we're looking at with State Highway 7, is how do we start to identify those seed funds, just like 119? You know, RTD stepped forward with 119 to create that initial $30 million. How do we find those types of resources for State Highway 7, so it can get a toehold on that regional planning process and get into the list? And how do we get the roadway itself classified on these maps? There's a lot of detail to it. But the idea is, on every angle, look for where we can identify resources, so that the project can move forward in the regional planning process. And we can keep, it's a real theme on all of this, it's leverage and partnerships. So we need to be working forward to do these things. We have learned that CDOT has some funding identified for repaving of State Highway 7, and so that could be an angle, if we can get that to count, so to speak. So each of those things, we work on together with the county, with our neighboring communities to advance these projects. And it is very, unfortunately, more complicated than it probably should be.
But the point being that if you have no funding identified yet, you can't get on the list to obtain funding. You have to have a certain level of funding in order to get in the plan, and then go from there to ask for more funding.
And this is the reason why we're bothering to tell you all this, is so that every time you see CDOT director, or RTD director, or anybody in our state delegation, you say, hey, you know, 119 and Highway 7, we really hope you're going to help us move those forward. And I will say this, that the southern metro area, Douglas County, those folks are really good at getting money for their projects, and we need to be good collectively at engaging sort of all those people and getting ours.
And not just if you see CDOT or RTD directors, but if you see a council member from Broomfield or Lafayette, and say, oh, hey, you know, are you guys interested in State Highway 7? Maybe we can work together, you know, that kind of stuff, too.
I think the folks down south are a little more organized. They're relentless, they're loud, and they're nice people, but they tend to monopolize the conversation at Dr. Cog and other places. And I mean, they're good. Anyhow, I'm taking a lesson from their book about how if we speak as a region, a northwest corridor region, we will do better. And we need to drag Louisville and Longmont with us to those conversations.
And how hard is that? I mean, where's Louisville and Mafki?
Oh, they're interested. I mean, they're full participants. I mean, so it's not like they're not thinking about it, but I think we do require some additional active coordination. So they're on board. I think we just, we could do more.
I know this was covered a little bit earlier, just in terms of sort of outreach, in terms of, in terms of public participation, in terms of desirability for what, you know, different formats and forms of different features and whatnot. But I have actually heard, and it's in part, I think, because of this project that was mentioned earlier, that's being considered out on Arapahoe, there definitely are some folks off of Arapahoe that, you know, I think, to some of them, this is probably news, and the question is, what sort of outreach is being done with respect to these broad plans for 7 and Arapahoe? And what sort of engagement is taking place there?
So in addition to some of the means that I mentioned, like the community working group and the one-on-one stakeholder meetings, we've had several large-format public open houses. We've had neighborhood meetings that we've done in conjunction with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan update, and we've had really good turnout. So I would say that's where we probably, if you're referring to perhaps the neighborhoods in that area, that's probably where we've had the best and the most participation, have been at those larger meetings. And we've also offered, through our community working group representatives, to let us know when they have HOA meetings, and we'd like to attend those sorts of things. So far, we've had, it's been difficult to get on. There are a lot of issues that they're dealing with. There's a new group out on Arapahoe called the East Arapahoe Leadership Committee, and so we're also trying to get in front of them to provide more information. So it's a continuous process.
Good. And is there a place they can, is there a website link or anything that they can go to?
There is. There is a website link, eastarapahotransportationplan.net. And then another thing that's happening is, next month, the East Arapahoe Plan will be the front cover of the community newsletter. So that's going to reach a really broad, I mean, that's going to reach every household in Boulder.
Sure. Great, thanks. That's helpful.
Yes.
Suzanne?
Mary.
If I may, could I provide just a quick update on the PASS program working group, which is also a PPWG, not to be confused with the other one? So just real quickly, what, we've been meeting since April, once a month. It's a group of about 24 people from all over the metro, all over the district, the regional transportation district. And over the last month, we've kind of ramped it up, and we began to meet more frequently. There are three options currently on the table, and three subcommittees that have been meeting to detail out those options and prepare them for modeling by the consultant. So that's kind of where we're at right now, is putting the final details on the details for the modeling. And then we'll kind of tweak after that and see where things go. One of the options is expanding access to the ECO Pass, so.
Which seems like a no-brainer, but can't take anything for granted.
It does seem like a no-brainer, but yeah, you cannot take anything for granted, so we shall.
What's the timing on the modeling?
The modeling should happen in, over the course of the next couple of months. And this committee will likely go into at least the first quarter of next year. So that's all I have.
Cool. Thank you.
Thanks for serving on that. Okey-dokey.
Okay, moving on to Transit Service Delivery Study. My name's Natalie Stifler. I'm a senior transportation planner with Go Boulder, and I'm going to be giving an update on the Transit Service Delivery Study. So just to start with the purpose of the study, our current service delivery structure, okay, our current service model, which relies heavily on RTD for both local and regional transit service, is constrained. We need to find additional or new models to fulfill the renewed vision for transit. Recently, we've learned that RTD is backfilling FastTrax with base system funding, and this will continue into the foreseeable future. So this is really a structural issue for RTD, and they haven't identified a solution. And so we have, along with many other communities, are getting to the point where we understand that something has to happen, and we need to do something different. So the purpose of this study is to look at our current service delivery structure and the challenges with delivery and the renewed vision for transit that Kathleen had referenced. And then also, we'll be looking at potential alternative funding, operating and governance partner structures, that can optimize opportunities to implement our renewed vision for transit. So why this matters, I think we all understand the importance of this, but transit is the backbone of our transportation system, and so it's critical to meeting our mobility and sustainability goals that are identified in the transportation master plan. So just to go over process, we initiated this study back in late 2016, and that was the first phase of the service delivery study. So the first phase included a financial assessment of current and planned transit service, an analysis of Boulder's current return on investment for transit service provided by RTD, as well as a review of national examples of various local and regional service delivery models. And so tonight, I'll be presenting the findings from that first phase of work. And now we're in Phase 2, which we kicked off this month. This will include the identification and analysis of alternative transit service scenarios and the related fiscal impacts. So options that we would be looking at will include maintaining or expanding our current service delivery model. So an example would be an idea such as the city in Boulder County establishing and operating consolidated transit service, or the city operating local transit management and operations of the CTN system, and/or forming a new regional transit authority. So those are just a few ideas of scenarios that we'll be looking at in this Phase 2.
Can I ask, are any of the scenarios that we're considering involve withdrawing from RTD?
So we will look at what that would look like, but I think everyone, or so far, our policy steering committee doesn't think that that's a viable option.
But is anybody looking at it? I mean, how do you know it isn't?
So we've talked about us actually having either Boulder County or city legal staff actually understanding what it would take to do it, because I do think we need to answer that question.
Oh, yeah. I agree, but I'd like to see it.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
I think that's really important. This comes up over and over again, and I get pretty frustrated, and there's all kinds of names you can come up with for RTD, but I won't say them here, but anyway.
Yeah, to be clear, I wasn't advocating, it was just a factual question, if you're including that, your scenario.
Yeah, yeah, we've talked about it.
And we need to just know, though, what the consequences of that would be.
Yeah. And then, so as we move into 2018, we'll include a detailed analysis of these and other service delivery scenarios to understand and evaluate the costs and benefits, opportunities and challenges. And then the final phase of the study is anticipated to be completed in mid-2018, and this will include a recommendation to carry forward one or more preferred scenarios, and involve a detailed financial analysis, and a recommended sustainable funding mechanism to support the operations of a preferred governance model. So moving into the findings from Phase 1, this included a financial assessment of our current and planned transit service. Just for a little background first, this slide here shows what the 1% sales and use tax breakdown is for RTD, just to remind everyone. So in 2004, metro area voters approved an additional 0.4% sales tax to fund FastTrax system improvements. And then, in Boulder's portion in 2015, it was about $9.3 million for that 0.4%. And as I mentioned, RTD is drawing down on our base system funding to backfill FastTrax due to massive shortfalls in the FastTrax budget. So when assessing the renewed vision for transit, we found that our annual operating cost to provide our existing transit service in Boulder includes all of both local, including all of both local and regional service, for the whole, you know, Boulder County routes and City of Boulder, is approximately $50.4 million. And the annual operating cost to provide Boulder's long-term vision for transit, including all local and regional service, is $117.7 million, so over doubling our current cost for transit. And this would obviously require funding from multiple sources, including local, regional, state, and federal funding sources. Now, in looking at Boulder's return on investment, we considered all financial contributions to RTD for base service. So we're just talking about base service over the next couple of slides here. What we found was that in 2015, the Boulder community contributed a total of approximately $32 million for RTD transit service. There are a variety of revenue sources. The two main sources were the sales and use tax, at about $14 million, and then the fare box, which includes ECO Pass, contracts, and subsidies, and programs. So that's about at $11 million. Those are our two main funding sources.
Can I ask a real quick question?
Uh huh.
On your slide two ago, about the cost and how it's escalating so much, have you made any assumptions about driverless buses? Because my understanding is a big piece of the expenses in the drivers. And have you made any assumptions about smaller vehicles or driverless?
We haven't. So this assumes that it's based on our renewed vision for transit that was developed in 2014. We didn't make major changes to that plan when we looked at the cost of what it would take to implement that. There are, I would say, kind of, you know, in the background, we've said we would look at transportation network companies to fulfill some of the first and last mile issues, or to fulfill where we typically would have a more coverage-based service, we would look at more advanced mobility options. But those aren't part of this cost model, so this is a pretty traditional cost model. So just continuing with the return on investment, we then looked at the other side of the equation. So based on RTD's fully allocated cost model for all RTD-operated routes, this is RTD local and regional base service for the Boulder community. The cost is approximately $34 million in 2015. This also includes a subsidy that RTD pays to the city to operate the hop. So in summary, Boulder covered about 94% of the cost of service directly provided by RTD in 2015. And this, when you take out, so that note includes revenues and costs for accessory ride services, when you take out accessory ride services out of the equation, that what we put in goes up. So it's about 96 cents for every dollar we get back.
Natalie?
Is that, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Real quickly, what's the community that would come closest to this level of coverage?
Yeah, that's a good question. We are by far at the, in the attachment, there's a little bit more information, detailed information about this, but we are by far contributing more to our information about this, but we are by far contributing more to our service than most other communities are. And the way you can understand that is based on our fare box recovery. And in your packet, it talks about the, what Boulder's fare box recovery is in comparison to the district's fare box recovery, and we are significantly higher than what most other communities are.
What's another typical community invest?
So I don't have that number off the top of my head of what another community invests.
Okay.
Yeah, but we could get that for you.
Well, we just know we're one of the highest.
Yeah, and we're having, so Boulder County has talked about doing the same study at the county level. They've done something similar to this in the past, and so I think there's interest at the county level to look at this, because we do know, I think we all have a sense that if you were to look at this on the county level, those numbers would likely be reversed. We would be putting, the county would be, countywide would be putting in more than what they're getting back.
Right.
So, and then, now talking about that 0.4% with FastTrax, so as I mentioned, we contributed about $9 million in 2015 to fund FastTrax operating service. And what we saw was with the introduction of the Flatiron Flyer, we're seeing about a $2 million additional investment for Flatiron Flyer service on an annual basis. And then, of course, also recognizing that RTD invested in the new Flatiron Flyer buses and US 36 infrastructure improvements, and Boulder does receive a benefit from those capital investments that are at about $200 million.
Natalie, what does the fare box recovery look like for the Flatiron Flyers?
We are, I don't know the exact number, but we're, we were under $2 on the B routes. We were under $2, so I think we're probably around there, no worse than that. Yeah. And that, in comparison, if you compare that to, like, the B line or one of the rail lines, those are more, anywhere between $6 and $8.
So $6 and $8 compared to...
That's the cost per rider.
What does it cost?
So, yes, are you, you're asking about, like, the fare subsidy?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we talk about it in, like, subsidy per boarding. So for Flatiron Flyer service, we're extremely efficient. It's a really productive service, and so we're under $2 an hour, or $2 per rider, sorry, $2 subsidy per rider. Where the rails are more like $6 subsidy per rider.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a follow-up question as well, which was, you know, in reading the analysis in our packet on this, I said there's the big differential in the operating between what we get and what we contribute each year. I don't remember seeing any, like, amortization of the capital costs of US 36 to kind of say, well, RTD put in X many hundred millions into this, and over 30 or whatever period you use, 30 years, 40 years, that's kind of worth this much per year to us. Was there any...
We didn't do that, that level of analysis. We just looked at the two, kind of, high-level number of the 200 million that they put in over the course of, you know, the last 10 years, and then, and then just said, you know, we get a portion of that, but we didn't amortize it.
Okay.
Yeah. Did you want to add anything?
That's something to look at.
Yeah, we could look at that, definitely.
If we wanted to get the full picture of how much we're getting out of the FastTrax system, I think it's an important piece.
Okay, okay. So the second part of the Phase One work includes this national agency review. And just to provide a little bit of context, you know, what we'd like to do when we're looking at peers is provide some type of comparison. And so our transit model today is, as we've discussed, RTD is our regional transportation provider, operates the majority of our routes. And then there, we enhance that with our fare or buy-ups for the jump and the bound, and then with ECO Pass, and then also just the investments we make, capital investments we make in the community to support transit. And then, the city also directly manages the hop route, which is operated under contract with VIA, and that's a partnership with CU and RTD. And then we also contract with other local jurisdictions with transport from Fort Collins to operate the interregional service from Fort Collins to Boulder. So we have a very multifaceted approach to providing service today, and I think it's just something to keep in mind as we're thinking about our peers that we looked at. So with the...
We have a real quick question.
Yeah.
Last night, I got a question about transportation between Boulder and Greeley. Just curious, because I didn't think there was anything going on, but is there anyone that speaks to transportation between Boulder and Greeley?
So today, there's not direct service from Boulder to Greeley, so there's local routes within the North Front Range that would need to connect to 287. And then through that connection, for example, someone could go from Greeley to Loveland and then connect to Flex at Loveland and to commute into Boulder. So there, it would definitely be a multi-leg trip to do that. But there are, my understanding is there are plans to enhance direct service between Loveland and Greeley, so that trip could actually become more efficient over time. But I think it's an example of the types of questions we also get from people that are commuting on beyond the typical RTD boundaries. So we're hearing from east of I-25, from Frederick, from Firestone, from up north, from Greeley. So when you think about the travel sheds coming in and out of Boulder every day, it's very large and very interregional, so...
So it could, it could be done. You just have to be patient and...
Today, it would be a really long trip, to be honest, but it is something that I think the North Front Range is trying to look at, how do they enhance that east-west?
Okay, great. Thank you.
I saw that Greeley's proposed for a hyperloop stop, too, so that's...
[laughing]
Give it 50 years.
Right?
Autonomous vehicles, we're done.
Okay, so for the peer agencies that we looked at, we looked at two from the LA metro area, and then one from Seattle and from Washington DC. And what's important about all of these agencies is that they are all local agencies that operate in a bigger regional context, but each of them has a different operating model. And so, again, in your attachment, it goes, we go into quite a bit of detail around each of these peers and what we've learned through interviewing them, just what's worked for them and what could be improved. So what really, the summary kind of distilled down is that there are, there's two operating models. There's the separate local operation, so Santa Monica, for example, with Big Blue Bus, they're a department of the City of Santa Monica, and then they provide transit as a separate agency in addition to what their regional LA metro partner provides. And then there's the service buy-up option, where the City of Seattle passed a city ballot initiative to fund transit both locally and regionally for the City of Seattle. And it was a pretty big initiative, about $60 million a year, and they are partnering with their regional transportation provider, King County Metro, to provide that service. And Seattle really has, holds, you know, a lot of control in that situation. And what we learned is that both operating model options appear to be viable options for the city. There are really two models, the separate local operation and the service buy-up, but then within each of those, there's a lot of different ways we could go. And so that's really what this next phase of work is looking at, is just that breakdown of all the sub-options. And the most important thing, I think, to remember here is that a separate local system would require a full operating entity embracing all functions, funding, and governance through the public or private endeavor. And we've done that on a small scale with the hop service, but what we'll be looking at is if we were to expand that model with the hop service, what that would look like for us. So next steps, as I mentioned, we've begun the Phase Two work. We'll continue that through the rest of this year and into early next year, and that'll include analyzing these different scenarios and the structural options, financial options, and governance options related to each. And then we'll work towards identifying a preferred scenario or scenarios, most likely. And we'll be back at the end of this year to update you on where we're at with the Transportation Master Plan update. And we will, at that point, have identified a range of scenarios, and we'll be able to share that then. And in the meantime, we'll just continue to be meeting with our technical and policy steering committee, our service providers, and stakeholders. So the key takeaway here, I think, is that we need to do something different. Our current model is not working, and what it probably is going to look like is some type of layered network approach. It will be something on top of what RTD already does for us today, and there's more to come in December.
I have one question for you.
Uh-huh.
With the buy-up option, where we get more service when we put in more money, is RTD pretty much always willing to do that as long as we throw the money at them, or do sometimes they say, look, no, we're just not willing to offer that service, no matter how much you pay us?
Right. So I would say, two years ago, I would have said, yes. They would say, yep, we'll provide that service if you're willing to pay for it. But now with vehicle constraints and driver constraints, it does not look that good. We've been told, actually, by RTD that we are likely going to see some, something from them in the future after 2018, that they are not, it's questionable that they'd be able to provide the buy-ups on the jump and on the bound, because they, they're short 150 drivers right now out of close to 900. And they're having to just not run buses. They just skip trips if they don't have the drivers to do the trips. And so that, that buy-up option, it would, what it requires is that, one, the driver situation is improved, and we would have to play a part in that. And then, two, the vehicles, we would have to pay for the capital cost related to vehicles.
Thanks. Okay. So I'm looking at, this is great stuff, but you're also exceeding, I think, how long we thought this was going to go?
We are exceeding.
We are exceeding it. So this is cool, so we have one more section. I'm also aware that we have a member of TAB sitting here, and if you want to add in your two cents at some point, are you sure? You don't have to, but I want to give you that option.
I appreciate that, Tab. I'm good, thank you.
Okay. All right. So we have one more, which is about the, sort of, the big funding.
Okay, great. So we'll go through this pretty quickly. And again, I think, as we said at the beginning of this conversation, all of these topics are interconnected. When we're talking about division plans, and then how do we go about developing the corridor plans, and then it all comes down to, well, then how are we going to make them real? And where it all, kind of, the rubber hits the road, as people say, is funding. So when we talk about transportation funding, we look at it at all levels, local, regional, state, and federal. It's a complex, kind of, combination approach. And again, I want to start with our transportation investment principles that come out of our Transportation Master Plan. That's where, again, we go back to for all of our policies. And so where we really want to focus is creating a safe and reliable, balanced transportation system that serves people using all modes for all ages and stages of life. We do everything we can to leverage the resources that we have typically. On an annual basis, the Transportation Division budget is approximately $30 million, and again, that's made up of a combination of funds. And then we look to leverage those through as many grants and partnerships as possible. I think it's really important tonight to really thank the Boulder community for investing in transit, in transportation for the last 50 years. When we think back to 1967, and that the voters came forward with this visionary plan to fund both transportation and open space acquisition, really set the stage for an amazing place. And so that investment that's been made over all of these years has helped create the community that we have today, the compact, walkable community. And so we're able to continue that investment. We really view the work we do in transportation as being stewards of the community's resources. And so how do we continue to invest those going forward for the next 50 years? And how do we do that in a way that, again, continues to leverage everything that we have and stretch those dollars as much as possible to create both the local and the regional transportation connections? So we look at our funding bankup, again, that blue, large blue portion is the local sales tax that's provided by the Boulder community, and then the others represent some of the state and federal funding as well. I mentioned that all of these topics are interconnected. When we talk about our resources, our priorities for how we invest those resources are also identified in the TMP, both locally and regionally. This map highlights some of the regional priorities. And again, as we've been talking about through the corridor planning process and the transit service delivery, we need to focus on those key top items to go to work on with our coalitions, with our neighbors, and be able to leverage the city funds, continue to press for ongoing investment by CDOT and by RTD, and any new funding sources that come forward as well. So this, this just gives us kind of that regional picture of where those priority projects are and how we're continuing to focus on them. In addition to the arterial BRT that we've talked about tonight, the railroad quiet zones are very important on a regional scale. We all know the impact the train horn noise is having on our community. It's happening and affecting the communities all along our transit corridors and the TOD neighborhoods, and so we're working together with our regional approach to fund the quiet zone improvements. And we're currently in the process of developing a, what's called a Tiger application for federal funding, and we'll be submitting that in October. Again, it's a joint effort with the city, Boulder County, Lewisville, Longmont, excuse me, Longmont and Broomfield. So it's just some examples on how we're focusing our attention. We mentioned a little earlier this evening, too, the federal funding that's administered through the Denver Regional Council of Governments, or Dr. Cog. That funding that comes in through the region has traditionally been allocated primarily through a competitive regional process, and there are many factors at play that are going on now within the Denver metro area and the communities that's looking to do that differently going forward. So where, as in the past, there was a, kind of, a smaller set-aside fund, and then a larger regional fund for major projects to compete for, the new model is looking at a larger set-aside and then a larger amount of the funding that would go to the sub-regional levels, which basically is the county level that would be allocated through a formula-based approach by population and employment. And kind of what all of those complicated things mean for us is most likely less Dr. Cog and federal tip funding in the future, significantly less. For example, in the current cycle we're in right now, the City of Boulder has received over $11 million in funding for a whole variety of multimodal projects. So we think about the diagonal, we think about the baseline underpass and intersection improvements, North Broadway. Those are examples of projects that are being done today that are, have been funded through this type of funding mechanism. Countywide, the current program is over $22 million, and that's for all of the communities in Boulder County. What we expect under this new sub-regional approach is likely for all of Boulder County, there will be $12 to $16 million. And so when we think about that, you know, what is the City of Boulder's share of that, and what are the share of the other projects? And then when you think about East Arapahoe and 119 and South Boulder Road, you start to realize the impact of this different approach, and we need to be thinking strategically about how do we make sure all of our projects can compete on those lists? We talked about State Highway 7 earlier. We've got to get them on the list, and we've got to be able to compete. Our projects compete very well when they can get in the door and the regional front because of the multimodal nature of our projects, but we've got to create a place where they can be competitive. We'll continue to look for federal funding for the quiet zones. And again, I think the punchline in all of this is that the future of our funding mechanisms are substantially changing, and particularly on the federal and the regional front. And we need to be preparing for that today, and we need to be thinking about what are different types of strategies going forward. One of those strategies is continuing...
Do you mind if I just interject? Do you mind going back to the previous...
Oh, no, no.
But just that, we have a shot at more of this if we can get... But just that we have a shot at more of this if we can get State Highway 119 funded through the regional process. And that's kind of our current advocacy focus that we're pushing on as hard as we can. Because if we are -- 12 to 16 is our likely amount if it's just the subregional amounts. But if we can get 119 as one of the major regional projects funded, then that would -- could make that go up substantially. So that's our big advocacy push right now.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that, and that you're right, that is really important. So shifting gears to the state level, because, again, we're all part of this larger transportation ecosystem. I think CDOT, for the last several years, has been making the case that they simply are facing financial challenges, both on the basic operations and maintenance of their system, as well as being able to do capital expansion. And when we think about our transportation system here in Boulder, many of our local roadways that we rely on are also state highways. So we look to partner with CDOT on roads like East Arapahoe and the Diagonal and Canyon and many of the streets that are important within our communities. So we need to be thinking about, how can we partner with CDOT to look at additional funding opportunities at the state level? While Senate Bill 267 was recently approved by the state legislature that provided some new funding for the state, but it's very limited and most likely will go to rural areas, and not much will be seen in terms of new funding in the front range. However, the U.S. 36 Mayors and Commissioners Coalition has made a request to CDOT Region 4, which is our region, that the transit funds that have been identified through that new initiative would be allocated to State Highway 119. So again, you're hearing the common theme, whether it's regional funding, state funding, federal funding, we're trying to do everything we can to focus resources on that corridor. The other new news that's happening on the state level is the idea of -- that's coming forward from the Denver Metro Mayors and Metro Chamber and Contractors Association about potentially putting an item on the 2018 ballot to raise funds for transportation. And our hope and the work through the MCC is that that ballot item would include, again, a balanced approach, similar to Impact 64 or House Bill 1242 that was -- went forward earlier this year, so that it would include funding for roadways, funding for transit, and then a shareback to local communities. So if we can get a package that includes all of those elements, that is something that would be very helpful in working concert with our goals and initiatives. We've also made the case that it's very important that that new funding be not only for capital but for operating and maintenance. Because we all find ourselves in the situation where you can build a project, but it's very hard to continue to run it over time or take care of it over time. Another issue that's coming forward, or opportunity that may be coming forward, is that if statewide solution cannot be found, there's interest being discussed around forming smaller regional transportation authorities. And, for example, the Colorado Springs area has that in place today. There's the talk of either, you know, metro areas or North I-25 or Northwest area. It's a way to identify funding for specific projects for smaller areas. So I think everyone's trying to look at all of the above. You know, what are those options and what could go forward and benefit all of our needs?
Hi, Kathleen. I was just going to ask about that Volkswagen diesel lawsuit. I heard that maybe there would be money available for electric vehicles?
Yes, that's correct. So there is funding that will be allocated for a variety of things that come out of the VW settlement, some for electric vehicles, for charging stations. And they're all most likely competitive grant programs within those different pots. There's a pot that's been identified for transit, so being able to replace diesel buses with electric transit, for example. So there's a whole array of that as well. And so we'd certainly be looking at that to fund local and regional projects as well. The challenge with the VW funding is that it's a one-for-one replacement. So it's replacing a diesel vehicle with an electric vehicle. So it's -- I'll just use the transit example. It's not funding that could be used to buy new buses to run a new transit route. You have to be replacing an existing bus. But it could be a very, I would say, a very good source for us to look at, for example, for trying to electrify the hot fleet. That would be a priority.
And I was thinking about, you know, electrifying our fleet and putting more charging stations out there.
Yes. So there's a whole citywide team that's looking at all the different strategies that we could go for, for all of those different potential pots of funding that would come about.
Okay, great, thanks.
Hey, so on the statewide ballot thing, I just think it's useful for all of us to be aware, is last legislative session, there was an effort to pass funding legislation, and it failed by one vote. And we worked really hard in our various little regional conversations to influence the categories within that statewide ballot breakup, breakdown, to make sure that enough was going to transit and also going to local, going into the local bucket, as opposed to just building more highways out there somewhere. So anyhow, people, I'll just say, within the Metro Mayors Caucus, people are really angry at the legislature for, you know, not getting that across the line. So they've re-upped the conversation about whether they'll try it again for 2018, either through the legislature or just go ahead and do initiated measure. But meanwhile, this other conversation is going on is, ah, to heck with the rest of the state, they're on their own, we're just going to do RTAs. But there's a whole lot of reasons why RTAs are really complicated and hard to do. So anyhow, there's no perfect path forward, but one thing that's really important for all of us to do is to be a part of those conversations, to make sure that the makeup of a state ballot item, if it happens, is something we'd want to support. And that we don't, again, Boulder doesn't -- I'm trying to think of the proper word -- doesn't get shorthanded or short shrifted, again, by, you know, helping to pass a state ballot measure that doesn't quite work for us. So anyhow, I just, it's really important, and Carl will keep us updated on those conversations, but it's important what's in them. And the worst thing would be to have something on the ballot that we don't like.
Yeah, which I think means partly funds to support our own operations, but also just from a philosophy perspective, having a heavy transit component to any funding initiative that goes forward.
And the Chair of TAB would like to speak. Come forward.
Thanks. I'm all about reconsideration, so thanks very much.
You should introduce yourself.
Pardon me, I'm Bill Regler. I'm the Chairman of the Transportation Advisory Board. I just wanted to just give everyone on council a heads-up that at the next Transportation Board meeting in October, we will be holding a public hearing about what we consider to be the safety issues along Diagonal and also 36, which is outside of Boulder's city limits. Part of this is a -- part of the reason why we're bringing this to TAB is that there's been a number of accidents involving cyclists. Most of those accidents are Boulder citizens. So the purpose of having this public hearing is to then trigger a resolution that would then go to council, expressing the sense of the Transportation Board urging both council but also CDOT to look more seriously at safety measures that can protect our cyclists.
So like a regional bikeway to Longmont State, for example.
So thanks, Phil. So on US 36, is it the segment north of Boulder?
Yeah.
Okay.
And on the Diagonal, what part of it is, are you looking at?
Well, I think that many, if not most, of the collisions are basically from IBM up until J, so.
Well, thanks for prioritizing safety. I think it's really important to keep working on that. And maybe when we talk about a Transportation Master Plan, we can have all of TAB invited on a more timely basis to join us.
Yeah, of course. And I will say that we've been working closely with Cyclists for Community, which has privately raised funds for signage on 36 north of Boulder, which I understand the council has, in principle, agreed to, and that CDOT has been a bit tricky in terms of accepting. So our hope is that through these public information campaigns, which will then be compounded with social media activity and emails to the community, and also just some public awareness efforts, that we can help move the needle a little bit. But I want to emphasize that we want to work with you on this, and so I just wanted to make sure that you had that heads-up, so you weren't caught off guard.
Yeah, and I just want to add to that. Next month, in October, the Rocky Mountain Greenway Committee will be meeting, and we're really focused right now on US 36 and trying to get something that is -- it won't work for everybody, but that is off of 36, on the east side of 36, so people can ride very safely with their family and other members, so.
Exactly.
And we should probably talk about that at some--
We should do that anyway. Thanks so much.
Okay. All right. Taking us home here.
Okay, great. So I think we've talked a lot about this and funding. It's going to take all levels to make this work, and we need to find complementary solutions. So like you're saying, we need to be mindful of what's happening locally and regionally at the statewide, so that we're rowing in the same direction and not at cross purposes. So the Transportation Master Plan funding focus area will certainly be a highlight topic for the update that's coming forward in 2018 and 19 to address all of these different shifting sands that are facing us in terms of transportation funding. So I think we've covered a lot tonight on all these different topics. Again, they're all interconnected. We're continuing our work in all areas of the TMP and the ongoing community engagement around all of these topics. We'll be back to talk with you in December at our Transportation Master Plan progress check-in. We'll be sharing with you the draft of the 2018 report on progress, so we'll have some new data points. Hopefully, we're moving the needle in these areas. And then, moving into 2018, we'll begin the next update to the Transportation Master Plan and the next edition of the Safe Streets Boulder Report. So it's a cycle of continuous improvement. And we really, again, appreciate all of the help and effort that you all provide on an ongoing basis.
Well, back at you. This is definitely a team effort, and I think it's really useful to see kind of the full array of things that are going on, that you guys are pushing, and that we're trying to push for where we're at. And so it's very helpful. And the packet's very helpful. Does anybody have any other thoughts they want to throw into the mix?
I mean, for me, the challenge with transportation is everything happens slowly, right? Things do not move quickly. And then, when the change comes, many people are caught by surprise because things have moved slowly through these long planning processes. So like on Arapahoe, as the more we can get public input now and awareness, so your meeting with the leadership group in East Arapahoe could really help smooth the way so that we end up not in as much of a surprise mode with people. And that would be my one comment. All of these things will take years, perhaps, to get to fruition. And so, you know, to the extent that we can bring the community along with education, I think that's very helpful.
And it'll be great to have it on the front of the newsletter.
Yeah. Yeah. That's exactly the kind of thing that helps, absolutely.
Do you have another slide? Are you going to invite everybody to the forum?
Absolutely. So that's another exciting thing that's coming forward. October 18th is the Future is Here Advanced Mobility Event. And it will be that Wednesday evening at the Boulder Library. It'll be a great opportunity to learn more about new technologies with transportation, new opportunities, new potential policy considerations. I think it kind of helps us cycle back to the beginning where we talked about the why. And so how does new technology and how does mobility as a service and transportation network companies and autonomous vehicles, how do they help us achieve the community goals? And it's not just something that's new and shiny and sounds really cool, but how do we deploy them in a way? And how do we create a policy framework that supports the application of those new technologies so they help us move forward with our wide variety of community goals and values? So it should be a great night. I think it will be raising a lot of questions. It'd be an opportunity to learn from a panel of people from around the country, and practitioners and researchers around advanced mobility, and then certainly be food for thought as we move into the Transportation Master Plan update next year. So it'll be a great event, and we really hope you can come and share that with us.
Well, and it's a big deal. We were just out at Panasonic looking at all the new technology, but it's not the policy framework to guide it to the right outcome so that they actually work to improve, say, greenhouse gas emissions and other land use goals and stuff, is not a given. And so I think part of the reasons why this is so important is, the world is a-changing, and how do we steer it in a direction that gets us where we want to go? So it's really exciting stuff. But anyhow, Carl's been doing a lot of work putting that together, so Carl, thank you for that as well. All right. And Thursday, Bus to Work Day.
Yes, indeed, please.
Free buses on Thursday.
Yes, please, please do, and share the information with your friends.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have one more quick item from Jane.
Yeah, and this one is super quick. This study session, well, this special meeting was originally a study session in which we would have answered any further questions that the council had about the recommended city manager budget for 2018. But you actually did not have a lot of questions, but CAC asked me to come and report really briefly on the status of the items that you brought up. So certainly next week, you'll be getting first reading, and there'll be a comprehensive memo where the questions that you asked will be answered. But the sort of outstanding burning items that I know that you were interested in as a result of our last meeting were adding around $200,000 more to the Human Services grant funding, and also restoring fully the arts grants that -- to the same amount that they were in 2017. So the total of those two items was $200,000 plus $215,000, so a total of $415,000. So we went back to the budget, and I decided that we didn't want to take it either from fund balance or reserves, and we didn't want to take it from the new capital funding that we had. So we tried to find dollars in the general fund where we could find $415,000. And so our proposal that we'll be bringing to you next week will actually be showing, if you can go to the second one, yeah, that we will be showing a total of $615,000 in reductions in the proposed budget. So here's where they will come from. You'll recall that we were proposing to add a citywide retail strategy for 2018. In my conversations that night with council and following that meeting on further reflection, it began to feel to me like this was a premature item to go move forward, because we really do need to get the results of our downtown retail strategy study before we move forward with a citywide one. So I decided to reduce that by half. So we're going to reduce it down to $75,000. When we learn more from the current study, then we'll be able to scope for next year, and then possibly, if we need to, we'll move into 2019. But for 2018, we're making that reduction. We're repurposing a vacant position in information technology to the web developer. The web developer was one of the positions that we were adding in the proposed 2018 budget. So that will not be an add. It will be one less new employee, and instead, we'll repurpose a vacant position. We're going to be eliminating a long-term vacancy in community vitality. And then we have vacancy savings that can occur through delayed hiring. So when people leave the city, it takes us a few weeks to hire them. We'll be delaying that as needed, and we believe that through those savings and reductions, I will tell you, in a personnel budget in the general fund, we'll be saving $350,000. So as you can see, we will be having a total budget decrease of $615,000. But of that amount, $415,000 will be going to the items that you talked about at the meeting last week, or two weeks ago. So that's going to be the proposal that you'll see next week, in addition to lots of answers to the questions that you asked.
Yep. Aaron?
Just thank you for your responsiveness to our requests and ideas, and we can talk over the details at our first reading.
But yeah, it's really helpful to have a heads-up. Any other thoughts tonight?
Thanks.
Okay. And we all have--
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Jane for the responsiveness.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And we have this slide in our presentation packet, so people can study it at their leisure. Okay, well, thank you, Jane. Much appreciated.
Thanks.
And with that, Aaron?
I just wanted to remind everybody about the Regional Housing Summit that's happening Friday morning at 7:30 to 10:30. If you've, hopefully, RSVP'd already, if you're interested. And if anybody wants to carpool, see me afterwards.
Me? Also, we should debrief this really quickly, other than Suzanne forgetting our new rules about voting and public hearings. Sorry about that. Other thoughts on tonight? We did misjudge the time a bit. Apologize. The presentation on transportation was more robust, but it was good stuff, so.
It was a little--
Yeah, and I think the discussion on 30th and Perro had to happen, and I think it's really, it was a pretty good one.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Okay. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you. I forget, is it a-